I think it's important, the first page here, you should have a flag. This is the amicus brief, the highlighted portion. This is the amicus brief that was filed by seven South County cities before the Supreme Court, which the court did not take this case up for review. But it's important to note that they're bringing up locating shelters in other cities, of which I think we can all agree that probably one of those cities that they'd be looking at is the city that we're within right now. I'd encourage you to instruct the city manager and our council to be able to, to look at our municipal code specifically, Muni Code 41-1200 and 1201, to be able to, because right now, any shelter under thirty beds, I think can be zone, or established by right in three different SB2 zones. The next page is our point in time count. I know we've been extremely focused on South County cities and the lack of action that they have, but I think that the highlights in here prove out that that's not where our sole focus should be. For example, we have Garden Grove, Huntington Beach, Westminster, all severely under sheltering their homeless individuals, which puts on a strain on our own city and our resources here, as well as obviously, South County. Next two pages, the next page is what's, it's just the cover, so you see where this comes from, but this is a service planning area by, by the three shelters that the county reported during this period, but as you can see, about fifty percent of the, of the folks that are at the courtyard are not from Santa Ana, or actually, I'm gonna take that back, are not even from the central service planning area, yet alone, we don't know how many are from Santa Ana, and that is a county facility, but it's important to understand the, the dynamics that are at play there. And then the next three pages are specific requests for public information that I personally have submitted to both the Orange County Sheriff Department, as well as the County of Orange, and I, I would hope and suggest that the county, or that the city do the same. You guys are much more attuned to be able to, how to write these. I just, I just pretend like I know all this stuff, and I, I'd hope that you, that you instruct council in closed session to be able to do the same, establish requests for public information, as Judge Carter this morning was also requesting, so that we are armed with the data of who is in our, in the armory in Santa Ana, who's in the courtyard here in Santa Ana. I would suppose, I would posit that our neighbors next door to us, Huntington Beach, Garden Grove, Westminster, that they are also contributing to this concentration within Santa Ana, and we want to help these folks out, but we can't do it at the expense of everyone that lives, votes, and works here. So hopefully, this information you find useful to you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
With that, I think we're gonna go into closed session. If you can all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our invocation this evening will be given by Rupert Wegar, Police Chaplain.
Could you please bow your heads? Heavenly Father, we just come before you now, Father. We thank you for the stay and for our blessings. Father, we ask you to be with tonight's meeting and proceedings, Father. We pray for each and every one that's here. Father, we pray for peace, Father God, and we pray, Father, that everybody that's been appointed and anointed to do what they do here, Father, you are behind them, Father. I pray for all our citizens that are present, and those that are watching. Bless them, Father. Bless their homes, bless all this city, Father God. We thank you, and we give you honor and glory. In your name we pray. Amen. And amen.
Thank you, Police Chaplain. Now, we're gonna go ahead and sit down and start our meeting, and I'm gonna ask the city attorney, is there anything to report out of closed session? No, seeing no attorney, there's nothing to report out? We'll ask her in a moment. Let's now go to Councilmember Benja Loza, recognizing Frankie Amaya for his outstanding contributions to the community.
Good evening, everyone. While Frankie Amaya's parents walk up, I'd like to share little words about Frankie Amaya.
Now, we're gonna do a special, go ahead, go ahead.
All right. Blessing, blessing. At only nineteen years old, Frankie Amaya is a well-known soccer player who currently plays for Major League Soccer's FC Cincinnati, a soccer club based in Ohio. Frankie was the first overall draft pick of the 2019 Major League Soccer Super Draft, and the very first overall pick to be born in the 2000s. Frankie was born right here in Santa Ana, and is an example of the talent that comes from our city. In 2018, Frankie made fourteen appearances with UCLA, ten of which were starts, beginning his college soccer career. In January of 2019, Frankie signed the Generation Adidas contract with Major League Soccer, foregoing his college soccer career and jumping right into the professional league. Frankie has been training diligently and tirelessly, honing his skills for the upcoming season, which begins at the end of this month. Today, his parents are here to accept this recognition on Frankie's behalf. Thank you for being here, and please thank Frankie for setting such a seller example of our youth, showing that hard work and commitment truly pays off. And it was really important for me to highlight Frankie Amaya, a Santa Ana resident, who, who was able to go on and, and, you know, be a star in, in Major League Soccer, just because he is the, the example of the thousands of, of very, very athletic and talented kids in our community and in Santa Ana, that never, you know, or rarely see an opportunity to move on to something as great as the Major League Soccer, and get paid for it, you know, getting paid for something that you're good at and that you love. Last April, I found out that FC Cincinnati was going to be at LAFC, playing the Los Angeles Football Club, and I went out there, did you guys go to the game?
Yes.
And, you know, I, I went out there just to see Frankie play, 'cause, you know, as a Santa Ana resident and a Santa Ana, you know, born and raised, I had to go out there and, and show support for one of our own. So I was fangirling the whole time at the, at the stadium, so it was really nice to see that. So thank you, guys, for, Frankie can't be here because he's training for the new season that's coming up, so he's up there. If you guys wanted to say something in Spanish, in English, whatever you guys are comfortable with.
Well, thank you, I mean, it shows support, like, with the fields, the coaches, the club, Santa NFC provided, so I wanna say thank you to everybody. Thank you.
So his parents are here, accepting this recognition on his behalf, just, you know, us congratulating him, and, and, you know, just wishing him luck in his career, and thank you, guys, you know, for, for guiding him. So with that said, sure, say something. Little brother?
Yeah.
So this is Frankie's little brother.
Thank you, guys, for being here and supporting my brother, even though he's not here. He worked hard for this, to be in this team, and thank you for supporting him.
Do you want to join?
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's the mayor over there. We'll get to meet him right now. Mr. Mayor, someone wants to meet you.
Now, I believe we have our city attorney here. Anything to report out of closed session?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. There is one reportable action from tonight's closed session. By unanimous vote, the city council authorized the filing of litigation against the Union Pacific Railroad.
Thank you. Thank you. With that, I'm now gonna go to the special presentation by our police department, and we have our police chief here, David Valentine. Please, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, sir. There we are. Okay, Mr. Mayor, City Council, City Manager, everyone here present, and everyone watching, thank you for the opportunity to share with you the outcomes, really a summary of accomplishments of the police department throughout 2019. This is a very broad, high-level presentation. There are certainly a variety of other accomplishments. Up on the screen, you will see the first page, it's a two-page document that's attached to the city council agenda, that provides a summary, it'll be, it's available now, it'll be available on our website, we'll also post it to social media. And so let me get into the presentation itself. Before I, I share what occurred in the police department, I wanted to acknowledge the city council for your continued support, the city manager for her leadership, and then my staff, all the hard-working men and women of the Senate of Police Department, many of which are, are here tonight. My immediate staff of my office is here, and I appreciate all of their support and hard work. So one of the charges that we had in the police department is to address the vacancy rate, which impacts essentially everything we do. All services that we provide is impacted by the frontline police force. And so just a short, you know, two and a half years ago, inherited about sixty-seven vacancies in the police department. In 2018, we put together a strategic plan, and really, the team together that worked on this overarching goal of hiring the best police officers that we could find. And so I'm happy to report that in 2019, we hired fifty police officers. So that hasn't happened in over twenty years in the police department. And we did that at the same time of raising the standard of the police officer that we actually brought into the police department. I meet with every recruit and every lateral applicant to make sure that, that they're a good fit, not only that they meet the standard, but they're a good fit for our community. And with the hiring of those police officers, you, the question is, so what's, what's been the positive impact? Here are the, the core areas where officers have been deployed. First is patrol operations. That is our core function, that's what we respond to when people call us for assistance, whether it's a 911 call, or burglary to report. So additional patrol officers assigned to frontline policing. The second area is our homelessness response and quality of life team. We've actually added officers to that team, we will continue to do that in actually the first quarter of this year. But really, the work, the foundation began last year in the hiring of these additional officers. Third area, and this, these, these focus areas, deployment are all consistent with our strategic plan, our five-year strategic plan, that was put together with input by this council, city manager, and the community as well. The next area is addressing violent crime. So with the additional staffing, we established a metropolitan division, a major enforcement team, which focuses on violent crime across the city. This is proactive enforcement. We mirrored that team with our existing gang unit to establish this metropolitan division under one unified command. The next area is vice operations, to address the various vice-related crime, not only prostitution, but illegal gambling, anything in that area of violation of law. What's key here is looking at how, not only did we hire the fifty officers, but we looked at where our officers are assigned outside in different task forces. Obviously, there's value in participating in those efforts, but I took a critical look at, you know, what the return on investment was, redeployed to date, seven officers from outside task forces back into the police department and/or frontline. And so with this focus on proactive policing, what we experienced was a forty-four percent reduction in gang-related homicides from eighteen to nineteen. I cite this particular homicide rate because that's the one that we can take measures to impact. Unfortunately, the domestic situation, the husband-wife situation that occurs behind closed doors, hard to prevent, but, you know, gang crime that occurs out in the street, gang homicides, really addressing, removing guns off the streets, that focus has resulted in this reduction in gang-related homicides. The other area we wanted to look at, and also as a result of the additional hiring of officers, is our response time. So you'll note that in Priority One call, which is essentially our 911 emergency, life, death types of calls, a reduction overall from, we're down to seven-point-four-six. That's how we ended the year. I have more specific numbers. At the beginning of the year, we were at eight minutes and ten seconds for Priority One, 911 emergency calls. We ended the year at six minutes and thirty-two seconds. So that's a significant drop of about twenty percent as we worked through the year. And you'll also notice that in four of the five areas of our response protocol, there's been a drop last year. So again, looking at how we respond to calls, I do have currently a in-depth analysis and assessment of that protocol that hasn't changed in over two decades. So we're looking at that, at really a data deep dive, and see what defensible adjustments we can make. The next area of focus for us, where we had quite a bit of accomplishment, is the de-escalation training and, and focus on ensuring that our officers are trained to look at alternatives in how they respond to critical incidents. One of the prime pieces of, of training platforms that we use here is our Vera Tra Force Options Simulator, which some of you are aware of, and those of you that haven't come, certainly are invited to, to participate in that. In fact, our entire executive management team, under the direction of the city manager, our first EMT meeting was at the police department, actually put some of my colleagues through the system, and they got to see firsthand the value of critical decision-making, split-second scenarios that are unfolding. State-of-the-art training, we are the only police department in the county that has this threshold of training in technology. The other area that the city council supported was a transition to the TASER-7. This is an upgrade in technology for this piece of equipment. There needs to be not only confidence in the equipment that we provide officers, but the latest technology and, and training, so that we ensure that they use the equipment, and there's the focus on de-escalation. Another area that we're very proud of is our social media imprint. In fact, my social media coordinator is here, and we're really focused on messaging of the police department. So everyone knows that we respond to crime, but what else do we do, right? Those stories that involve the human being behind the uniform and the badge. There's a lot of those incidents that occur throughout the year, so we're really focused on providing tangible information, we do monitor the site in terms of feedback, and so fast forward, when we first took on this, this venture, we were about, you know, two or, second or third in large agencies in the county. We're number one in city police departments in Orange County today, in terms of likes. Now, please don't ask me what likes mean, because I'm a morus code-type person, I, I recognize the value of social media, I just don't do it myself. So that's why I have good, good people on staff. So we use this as a daily platform to communicate with the community. Another area that I mentioned was homelessness response, community engagement. I want to share some numbers in that regard, that I think are important here, part of the slide, but over the last five years, when we look at responding to homelessness-related crimes specifically, you know, we're talking about thirteen thousand, roughly thirteen thousand arrests that have been made. In 2019 alone, sixty-seven hundred were made. And so is the problem solved? No. Are there still folks that are committing crime that are part of this population? Yes. But has there been a concerted effort in addressing this? Absolutely. And this is done through the enhanced staffing that this council has supported. In addition to that, we also assigned officers to the various neighborhood association meetings. This is a model of community policing, direct engagement with neighborhoods that was in place some twenty-plus years ago. Fast forward, we're, in a sense, we're not trying to reinvent the wheel here, we want to make sure that officers get out of the car, have direct engagement and contact with neighborhoods. And so that is my presentation. The two-page summary of this overall is attached to the agenda, will be on our website, will go out to social media, on Nixle Tonight, any channel that you can see. And so with that, any questions?
Thank you. Let me see if Councilmembers have any comment or question. Councilor Solario.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure if I have questions, but just some comments. First, I wanted to compliment you on the, the great work in, in many areas. On the vice side, on, on Friday night, after a late-night poker session with some friends, I drove by Harbor and Hazard, and it was like, let's just say it was after midnight, and there was nobody there. So that was fantastic, 'cause I know that's been an ongoing thing, that the police department in conjunction with code enforcement and the city attorney's office have made a, a big difference, so thank you for, for that. Patrol, I think we all do see more, you know, cars on the street, and at some point, too, we may want to look at, you know, I think there's over a hundred officers that do patrol out of three hundred or so, I don't know what the right ratio should be, and I know that we're hiring new folks, we're, you know, having more in, in patrol, but, you know, to the extent we could keep beefing that up, that would be great. Homicides, fantastic seeing the reduction in gang-related homicides and just regular homicides, forty-four percent down, gangs in thirty-six, for typical homicides, that's fantastic. This past year, also fantastic job closing a lot of illegal gambling facilities, and, you know, partnerships again with the city attorney's office, code enforcement, FBI, and others, major, big impact. Here's where I'd like to see, you know, continued help is hotspots on the homeless. I know citywide, you know, there's more arrests, and I'm very appreciative, but I think our community tends to see the same group of homeless, you know, Santiago Creek, South Main Street, Bristol Warner, you know, Panhandle and over by Seventeenth and Santiago, and if we can identify what those twenty are, and try to keep them clean and safe, I think that would be good. Response times are doing well, but annually compared to a few years ago, citywide, it was six and a half, and now we're, you know, seven-ish, eight-ish, you know, we're, let's keep working on, on that. And then suggestions moving forward of other communities, you know, we always try to be the best standard for Orange County. The way we report out crime statistics, I think we can do better. For me, one of the models has been for a long time, New York City and their ComStat program. You know, maybe we'll have to look at their technology, their software, to see if something like that could, could work for us. And then finally, I don't know how much we do it here, and maybe this might be something you could speak to, or if not, it could be a research point, I know in Anaheim, that the apparently PD has a relationship with Ring, so they're able to work more closely with residents and neighborhood associations that have Ring devices, 'cause more and more we have that. And I know sometimes organically, there's some of that information sharing, but apparently, like in Anaheim and other cities, there's direct relationships between Ring and the police department and the community, and so let's look to see if something like that might work for us. Again, a lot of, you know, good work done, and we got, just gotta keep it going, but I'm very appreciative and fantastic on hiring all the officers, I think, you know, between, you know, your work, you know, the last collective bargain agreement that, you know, allowed us to, to pay them more and hire more, et cetera, I think that's been very helpful. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have also, Councilman Vincenzo Miento, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Chief, for the presentation. I want to thank you and your staff, and all city staff for this, because I know it's a, it's a collaborative effort on this, and so the numbers obviously speak volumes, right? So we're trending much better than we were before, and I think a lot of it has to do with not just numbers, because you could throw bodies and, you know, hire more folks, but if they're not deployed intelligently, then it's gonna be difficult to handle a lot of the problems, 'cause we could, you know, have a thousand officers, but if they're not supervised well or directed well, then I think that's gonna be a problem. So I want to thank you on that, because the numbers do speak to the fact that there are some really critical issues that are being addressed, response times being one of them. So you spoke on one of the issues I wanted to talk about, but the other one was something that was really important to me, when you and I sat down and spoke about what priorities I think we have. You know, the residents here pay the premium, and they pay a premium in taxes because they expect premium service, and I think that's what we're trying to give them, that's the goal, right? I think our residents understand that we're willing to go ahead and pay more if our service is gonna be quality. is going to be quality and the best in the county, and hopefully the best in the state at some point. So what you've done with these incidents that you've shown and the training that you've been able to give to your officers, and I'm sure the new ones are receiving it as much as those that have been with the department for years, is how to de-escalate. Because what we realize is that what we saw, at least what I saw over years, is this pattern of paying out on cases having to do with civil rights violations, excessive force cases, wrongful death cases. And I think it was for that lack of foresight that maybe now we have with you realizing that training up front pays you huge down the line, right? Because if you have these officers that have been trained to calm things down in a very, very tense condition, then, look, lives aren't lost, families aren't, you know, completely destroyed, and we're not paying out a lot of money, and we have a safer community, right? We have a community where people trust officers, people confide in them, people look to them. And so, look, I want to thank you for that, because that is a huge, huge step, something that wasn't really discussed well in the past. And so, that combined with maybe some of the preemptive training that I think you and I've spoken about, maybe preemptive counseling, because we give counseling to some of our officers after a critical, you know, encounter that they may have. But maybe that training needs to be done in advance, right? Preemptively to prepare them for conditions that, look, I can only imagine, are very, very difficult. I was with some of your officers on Thursday night at the Delhi Center when we were talking about some problems that that neighborhood and that park have been having. They spoke really articulately about what they're doing, and you had folks from the gang unit, you had folks who were dealing with some of the homelessness problems. So one of the things that we all agreed on was, a lot of this stuff has to be done in advance, right? Not after the fact, because you have to, you know, cure the problem, but if you can somehow preemptively address the problem, then it's not as massive as it is. So I, you know, that, in addition to some of what you spoke about with, I think you're referring to, you know, our officers getting out of their cars and walking. That's community-oriented, oriented policing. That's stuff that was done back in the Clinton era, right? When we had numbers drop way, way down. So all those things, I think, speak to the fact that we're going, you know, trending correctly. Things, the problems that we're trying to solve are not going to be solved overnight, but I certainly appreciate you making the best efforts, because it looks like we're going in that right direction. So thank you very much for your help.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. I believe, let's go to Peñalosa, and then we'll come back to you, Councilmember Becerra.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief Valentin, thank you so much for the presentation, and want to thank you and your staff, along with the City Manager, with the changes that you have made at the Police Department and the investment in training and education. I'm a big believer on, you know, higher education, you know, across the board and constant learning. So it's very important that we highlight these different investments that you're doing for de-escalation tactics and training, because it really makes a difference. I, you know, was fortunate enough to go out there to your simulator last year, and it was, you know, gives me a whole perspective, different perspective on what, you know, the day-to-day operations of being a police officer are. I mean, I had, I was sweating. I couldn't even function during the thing, because I was like, how do people in real-life situations handle this? So it's important that these investments are made, so appreciative of the leadership. And just wanted to thank you, and in regards to the social media, because you know I have to touch on it, all you have to do is just post the picture of Shadow at least once a week. That's going to get you, everybody loves dogs. Just keep Shadow at least once a week, and you'll get all the likes in the world. And with that said, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Councilman Peñalosa.
Becerra.
Sorry, Becerra.
I know I'm new, but come on.
He was still going.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, thank you for the presentation. Really excited about what I've heard, you know, 50 new hires. Congratulations on accomplishing that. I know that was a priority of this council, so, you know, thank you. And having those new hires obviously impacts the ability to bring down the response times. And as much as it's important to have professional responses, I think you'll hear a lot of people in the community that are concerned about prompt responses. They want timely responses. So as my colleagues have said, it looks like all the trends are going in the right direction, so I appreciate that and appreciate the update, and hopefully we can get these call times even down further, which I know may sound like a huge task, but I think a lot of people appreciate it. I know folks are saying that they are seeing a lot more of the patrol officers out on the beat, and again, thank you very much for everything.
Thanks, sir.
Any other comments? So let me just say thank you.
Yes, sir.
I know in particular, we talk about, a lot about the homeless, and I know we have the two, you know, types of teams that are going out there. The more we can do with additional officers and more we can, you know, impact them and, you know, say, you know, I know you can't arrest them if they're not doing anything, but, you know, stopping them and saying, may I help you? You know, what are you doing? Et cetera, et cetera. I think will encourage less loitering and, you know, protect the city more, because, you know, the biggest crime I see right now everywhere I go is, you know, the homeless problem, where they just kind of come in, they congregate, they take over, all of a sudden, it's not our town anymore, it's their town, and we just can't afford that. And I know you're doing a lot. I know the increase, you know, the enforcement is up, but I think we need to somehow find a way to do more to make the city better than it is. Thank you very much for your work, Chief.
Thanks, sir.
So with that, I'm going to direct our attention. I know that 23A, Mayor Protem, wants it to be polled. Are there any speakers for the consent calendar?
Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Go ahead, Councilman Peñalosa.
I'd also like to poll Items 10A. I was also going to poll 23A, so thank you, Mayor Protem, and 25B.
Any other items? I would entertain a motion on the ballot.
So move.
Second.
Is it unanimous? It's unanimous, so we're not going to do your likes. It's unanimous. So with that, 10A.
A. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. 10A is minutes from the regular meeting of January 21st, 2020. The reason I pulled this, Madam City Clerk, was because, as you're aware from the email chain that I sent you, when the agenda was posted, I found some errors in the minutes after they were posted to the agenda. So I want to just remind the Clerk of the Council staff to be, you know, these are important, this is an important item, as I know that we just kind of, you know, approve it every meeting without really discussing it. But I just happened to look through them, and there were errors in the minutes. So I'd just like to ask the staff if you guys could just please be more vigilant in the future when it comes to the recording of the minutes, so that we don't have these minor errors in them. But with that said, I'd like to move the item, please. They were corrected, by the way.
Second.
For the public.
Motion second. Is it unanimous? Seeing opposition, motion passes unanimously. Next item, I think, would be 23A, was it? And we have a speaker on that. Josefina Hernandez, maybe, or Joan?
Jonathan.
Jonathan. Come on down, please.
Good afternoon, Council. My name is Jonathan Hernandez. I'm a San Ana resident, lifelong resident of Ward 5, Artesia Pilar. And just double-checking here, there was two items that I'm speaking on today. So 23A is the rate, the street construction, correct? Okay. So this was, this was an important item for our neighborhood in Artesia Pilar, and I'm here speaking on behalf of the Neighborhood Association. As a lifelong resident of this neighborhood and a now homeowner to that neighborhood, I have experienced our streets, I have experienced the repairs that are needed firsthand, but in addition to that, the lived experiences of driving down rate every single day to get home, and how rough it is to get to Civic Center, and to get down to Fifth Street, and the much-needed repairs there as well. And residents in our neighborhood over the past decade have long demanded for these streets to be repaired. And when we have approached this city in the past to ask for these repairs to be done, we've been informed that it would be too expensive, that it would require state funds from the state of California to replace the concrete with new concrete. And I'm here today to ask that this agenda item be tabled so that further dialogue could be had between staffers and members of our community, so that we can discuss the impacts of asphalt versus concrete, so that we can discuss the environmental impact as well, and then lastly, the costs of it. And we hope that you please consider our insight and our lived experiences in Artesia Pilar and table this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me come bring it to Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, and thank you, Jonathan, for coming out and representing Artesia Pilar. So yes, this is in my ward, the Rate Street, you know, 23A. It is a big, long street that's made out of concrete. The Artesia Pilar neighborhood has been very patient for an extremely long time, and they deserve to have that street replaced with cement. It is an industrial area. There's a lot of tow trucks, there's a lot of heavy trucks, a lot of machinery that go through there. And I understand, City Manager, that this is under, and the bill, the director, who's filling in for what? If you can come forward, please, sir. Is there, there's a time limit on this, correct? Because this is under the, some funds, a grant that we have?
Yes. The funds to repair Rate Street right now comes from the CDPG funds.
And it's my understanding that the area around where the streetcar will be going through, that area is going to be concrete, correct? And then the rest of the street is supposed to be asphalt. But like the gentleman was stating earlier, and the rest of the neighborhood also, they would like an opportunity to speak with the city and to see if there's something we can do to bring some funds forward, so we can have a concrete, because they deserve it. Again, this is an industrial area, unlike the other areas, and I don't know if we can do anything about it. I mean, what, how much time are we talking about when we talk about time-sensitive?
So Mayor Protem, we would need a decision on this item to be able to utilize those funds, but I think Nabil can speak to the fact that the gentleman that spoke is absolutely correct. The Rate Street is extremely deteriorated, and to do a concrete street, it would require a complete replacement, which we don't have funding for to do that. But looking at it, it is Public Works' opinion that we can make it a very nice street utilizing asphalt. If we pass up this opportunity, about the only thing, and I'll defer to Nabil, the only alternative would be if we do panels and patchwork on existing concrete, but the street is at a level of deterioration that we are recommending asphalt.
That, that street is famous, famous for being, you know, terrible to drive on.
We heard you.
If you close your eyes, you can feel the bumps, you know. It's terrible. I mean, I go through there quite often, and I understand there's a lot of construction going on. And I understand that this is a grant, and if we don't use it, then, you know, we could lose those funds, and we don't want to do that. But at the same time, if we do put asphalt, because we're on a time limit, you're going to have the heavy trucks go through there again, and are we going to be waiting? It's not fair to this neighborhood. They've been very patient for a very long time. Can we, you know, I would like my council to please take a note of that area, that if it gets damaged again, because more likely it will because of those trucks, we're going to be back. We're going to be back asking for more. Is there something you'd like to add?
No, there is a way that we can make the asphalt last longer by routine maintenance, and every so often, we would come in and seal that street and maintain it better every so often. So we'll make it take, last a lot longer than it does or should with routine maintenance.
I would ask that if City Manager and your office could reach out to the Artesia Pilar neighborhood and meet with them and let them know the situation that we're in regarding the funds being, you know, time-sensitive, and at the same time that we plan on, you know, keeping an eye on it.
Will do.
Because like I said, unlike the other streets, this area is an industrial area and that's going to get used. And that's, those are my comments, and Councilmember Sarmiento would like to add?
Please, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. And thank you, Nabil, and to Jonathan as well. I think all of us know that Rate Street's known as the, you know, the shock breaker, right? I mean, so, you know, you go there, you destroy your rims, you destroy your shocks. So we all know that it's been long overdue to have work done, and it's one of those, I remember when we were doing the 300 miles of streets repairs before, this would probably qualify as a total, you know, reconstruct, right? Because it was, it was so poorly damaged. I had a question on a couple of things. You know, we normally use All American, and I forget who else was, you know, the other contractor that, and I know there's, there have been four bidders here, well, All American was one as well, Hardy and Harper, EBS. I don't recall us ever using this contractor. Are they new, or have they done work with the city before?
I looked at their references just before this council meeting. They've done some work for Santa Ana previously.
Probably not major work, and this is going to call.
It was about a half a million dollar worth of work for Santa Ana.
Right. And we've done, you know, millions and millions with some of these others, and not saying that that's a good thing, right? Because I guess one of the things, I think, you know, just to incorporate what Mayor Protem was saying, what the Speaker was saying, is that what's happening along rate is, you know, that's where the streetcar station is going to be. So you're going to have a lot of utilities that are going to come on, and what we've noticed is, you know, you do a street nicely, and then somebody forgot to, you know, put the utilities in, and they dig up what's been a very nice street to begin with, and it starts becoming not as nice anymore. So, you know, all that timing, we certainly don't want to use the grant money or lose the grant money. Is there any way that we could adopt with the understanding that there could be some adjustments made to timing? You know, what materials are going to be used by checking with, I think, this is what Mayor Protem was saying, by checking with the, with the Neighborhood Association, because I think they're probably not going to lead you or mislead you to do something that is contrary to what you're already thinking about doing, but it would be good to get their input on this in addition to what you've already fact-gathered on this.
We will arrange to meet with the Neighborhood Association as soon as possible.
And, yeah, and just maybe also while you're at it, just check in with some of those utilities that are going to be working very heavily on the station and see the schedule, right? To the extent you can coordinate the schedule as closely as possible, saves you a lot of trouble, and, look, it'll drive everybody nuts. It just, and I've seen it happen after a road has been nicely paved, and then you just have, you know, Edison going and dig it up, and they forgot to do something. All right? So those were my comments.
Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you for those comments. Additional comments, Councilmember Solario, and then Peñalosa.
I have, I just wanted to make, I already pulled it as well.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with most of the comments that have been made. We've all been waiting patiently for Rate to be done, and so it'd be a little rough to hijack and postpone it too long, but I, but I do think that if we move this forward, that we probably should, that parallels to it, we'd meet with the Neighborhood Association to, as Councilmember Sarmiento said, see if there might be other materials or certain areas that could be concrete, or there are innovative materials out there. We can have a little more wide in there that also helps with heat and, you know, and environmental issues. And then consistent with some recent council meetings that we've been having, we want to grow the amount of resource that we have to repair asphalt and concrete streets, and since we do follow VR City Manager on what that plan ought to be, I want to make sure that Rate also benefits from that, because it's a key residential area, a lot of folks use it. But as was mentioned by Councilmember Viegas, there's also a lot of, you know, working trucks and heavier trucks and others, they get a lot of activity, and so let's see what we can do to make that better, so that collectively, you know, that neighborhood is better off.
Will do. Thank you.
Councilman Peñalosa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree again with everything that my colleagues have said, and I wanted to, you know, look at ways moving forward. I know that rate, you know, when you're driving north on rate, on the right, you have residential when you pass First Street or Civic Center, I believe, and on the left, you have industrial. Have we worked with Public Works and Traffic to completely block heavy utility trucks from using that street because of its proximity to residential? I know there are other outlets or entry points where they could enter that industrial area?
We can look into that. I'm not, we haven't studied that particularly, but we can look into that. I know because of the recycling and those other activities on, on that street, Fifth Street or so, there's a lot of traffic, heavy traffic, so, but we will study it and come back to you on that.
Because, I mean, that would be important, you know, if we eventually move down this road of, no pun intended, of make this, this project, you know, how long is it going to last with that heavy?
it going to last with that heavy, uh, trucks going down it every single day? So, it'd be good to look at ways where we could, uh, block heavy trucks like that to enter that residential side of, of Rate. I know it borders both, but I mean, using it, there are other entryways.
Sure.
And I also wanted to point out that I, I pulled it for similar reasons, and also because I want to remind Public Works and, and City, and the City Manager that any of these Public Works projects that we keep, I mean, we're, we're approving millions and millions of dollars of, of contracts and construction work, but we still have just four inspectors, like you mentioned-
Yes.
-at the last council meeting. And I think that a lot of this, just driving around, you know, the city, I work full-time in Santa Ana and obviously live here, so I drive around a lot, and all the work that I see going on, I just, I mentioned to the City Manager last week, it's, I don't think it's up to par or up to standards of what we're supposed to see or want to see with the amount of money that we're paying, tax dollars that we're using to invest into our roads.
Sure.
I see a lot of, back to the comments I made last week, you know, unleveled work, work not done correctly. I, I mean, I'm not a, I'm not an engineer or a construction worker, but I could point out bad work when I see it, and, and I see it a lot. I get pictures sent to me daily from constituents of all the work that's being done, whether it's resurfacing a street or, or sewer line improvements, you know, which ones I'm talking about, Nabil. And, and I think it's important, if we have to contract out inspectors, additional inspectors to have on-call whenever we have work like this being done, because nobody knows if it's being done. I mean, you guys eventually see it, but the amount of work being done to the amount of inspectors that we have, it, it's just, the inspectors are, there's just too much work to inspect for the, for the four inspectors that we have. So, that's important to keep in mind moving forward with any of these Public Works projects.
Sure.
If we're going to be spending millions of dollars to invest in our streets, but nobody to inspect them, that's not going to work either. So, those are my comments.
Thank you. I've just got a, a quick comment, and that is that I know over on Durant, we had a summer situation, trucks, concrete versus asphalt, what do we do? And I know that particular area, you met with some of the businesses, you had some interaction. I, you know, go there often into that area, it's close to my neighborhood, and people are very happy. So, and, and I know that was maybe a different administration, Nabil, you're not yet in the position there right now, but I think it was the right, right thing to do, to go out and meet with people and make sure they understand what's happening, give you input. So, with that, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve with the understanding that we are going to keep an eye on it and make sure we give it the proper care that it needs if it gets-
Is there a second? There a second from Solario?
Just, now, is part of the motion including the, the meetings with the Neighborhood Association and the City Manager and make sure that, that dialogue happens-
Yes.
-before any of this work is done?
I, but that's my instruction. Yes.
You're the maker of the motion.
No, well, we already spoke about that when you got the agreement.
So, the answer is yes.
I think parallel, though, I mean, if a contract's going to be signed, we're not going to undo the contract, but parallel, we can do the contractual stuff and the Neighborhood meetings, and we can start making changes.
That's why I said with the understanding that they're going to pay attention, we gave direction on the side, but I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Yeah. Okay.
Councilman Penallosa?
No.
All right. Is it unanimous? It's unanimous.
Mr. Mayor, for consistency versus, we should use the lights, that's just my opinion. Not sure.
I just want to go a little quicker. If it's not unanimous, I'll use the lights.
Thing is, sometimes in passing, we have issues when we want to say we're not-
All right, all right, press the green light. Now we all feel better. Okay.
But, but on this, but on this point, I don't know if it should be you, Mayor, or the clerk. I've gotten questions from constituents that when we just see the board, we see who voted how, but the public doesn't know, so we need to figure out-
Well, that's another problem caused by that. That's why I like it when we-
That during real time, we need to announce it somehow, because if not, folks don't know why they don't vote.
I know, it makes it more confusing, and they don't even know how we voted.
Mr. Mayor.
And she's doing it for clarity.
Mr. Mayor, I mean, to Councilmember Solario's point, I think there's state law that came into effect in the last year or two that actually asks for an announcement of the votes, so-
Right.
-maybe that should be something-
And if it's unanimous, at OCTA, we have 17 board members, thicker agendas than here, and we don't have the lights, and we're complying with the law.
Well, you never get that also.
And if, and if somebody votes against, we note it. And if it's unanimous, we say it's unanimous. So, I think you can comply with the law.
We do the unanimous also, and we do the lights if we have to.
Let's, well, let's try that. Look, let's just keep going.
That's 25 board members.
Let's keep, and that's 25 board members. All right, look, let's continue, but point well taken. So, that's the end of the consent counter. Now, is a clerk and administrator the oath of office?
Councilmember, I have 25B also.
25B, okay, please. Who pulled that? Go ahead.
I pulled 25B. It's, it's a proven amendment to the agreement with Chase Partners, Inc., the amount of $91,000 for the expansion of the scope of work for business processes. The reason I, I pulled it, again, was I, I can't support this item because this was, even in the staff report, it says, "As part of this reorganization, Public Works Management asked Chase to expand the scope of the business process assessment and implementation project to also review the administrative process of the newly added operations." I just want to remind our, our various departments that, you know, that, that these type of amendments and changes, when it's going to cost us $90,000-plus dollars, need to come to the City Manager and to this council for approval. Nobody should be making these decisions without our consideration and approval moving forward. So, I, I, I will vote no on this item tonight, because the work was done without, and now the, what, what's happening here is the work was done, and now City's coming to us for permission to do the work that's already been done. So, it, it's, it shouldn't, it shouldn't be that way. It should come to us first for approval. If we okay it, then we could move forward with the, expanding the scope of work. So, those are my comments, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Is there a motion on the item?
Motion approved.
Second.
There's a motion, a second. Let's go ahead and vote, because I think there might be one no. Vote green if you're yes, no if you're red. Red the future. Okay, let's, let's keep moving. Now, the Administrator of the Oath of Office?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. If I could please ask Bernice Balinas, Winston Covington, Nicholas Sanchez, and Jacob DeLeón to come up front, please. So, if you would please raise your right hand and repeat after me, aye, and please state your knee.
Aye, Bernice.
Aye, Winston Covington.
Jacob DeLeón.
Thank you. Do solemnly swear-
Do solemnly swear.
-that I will support-
That I will support.
-and defend-
And defend.
-the Constitution-
Constitution.
-of the United States-
Of the United States.
-and the Constitution-
And the Constitution.
-of the State of California-
Of the State of California.
-against all enemies-
Against all enemies.
-foreign and domestic-
Foreign and domestic.
-that I will-
That I will.
-bear true faith-
Bear true faith.
-and allegiance-
And allegiance.
-to the Constitution-
To the Constitution.
-of the United States-
Of the United States.
-and the Constitution-
And the Constitution.
-of the State of California-
Of the State of California.
-that I take this obligation freely-
That I take this obligation freely.
-without any mental reservation-
Without any mental reservation.
-or purpose of evasion-
Or purpose of evasion.
-that I will-
That I will.
-well faithfully-
Well faithfully.
-discharge the duties-
Discharge the duties.
-upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations. Yes. Thank you. Feel free to have a free second, that's all. Please.
I believe now we're on item 55A.
That's correct.
Okay, I would entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
Is the motion unanimous? No opposition?
No opposition.
It's unanimous. Thank you. 65A, is that the next item, Madam Clerk?
That is correct.
Okay. I'll call on Mayor Protem Viegas.
I believe the Councilmember Becerra want to do.
Go ahead, Councilmember Becerra.
We have a, we have, what, Speaker? We have a Speaker?
Come on down, Mike.
Yes.
I didn't get the card, sorry about that, so don't get mad at me. She just gave it to me, Mike. I know you can make a speech. Go ahead.
It's okay, I know they're busy over there. Mayor and City Council, this agenda item to review and modify City Council's subcommittees has been turned into a political hit job against two sitting council members by the Santa Ana Police Officers Association. I have respect for the Santa Ana Police Department and the individual police officers of the department, but the association which represents them politically has sunk to the lowest of lows. This letter they have presented calls for you to remove Councilwoman Cecilia Iglesias and Councilman Juan Viegas from the Public Safety Code Enforcement and Neighborhood Empowerment Committee. In the PO, in it, in their letter, the POA maliciously and falsely accuses the two council members of violating state law and wrongfully diverting city resources. None of that is true. It is the POA which is wrongfully diverting city resources by conducting a recall campaign and special election against these council members, which will cost, which will cost the taxpayers of Santa Ana $650,000. It is understood that politics plays a role in the city business that you conduct here. It is unavoidable, it is unavoidable, but it should also be kept to a minimum. It is residents of Santa Ana that you're elected to represent and serve, not a political entity which by spending vast sums of their members' money and costing Santa Ana taxpayers hundreds of thousands of dollars, is attempting to run roughshod and bully and purchase a council to do their bidding. You know what this letter from the POA really means? They are telling you that you had better kowtow to their demands, or your political contributions will dry up, and they will use their dirty political money to hound you out of office as well. I urge you all to stand up for what is right and to not remove council members Viegas and Iglesias from the Council Public Safety Committee. Thank you.
Thanks for that, Mike. We have two other speakers. We have Jonathan Hernandez, followed by Alan Wu.
Good afternoon again, Mayor, City Council. For those of you who are just getting here, my name is Jonathan Hernandez, resident of Santa, of Artesia Pilar neighborhood, Ward 5, and I am here today to, to talk about this, this item that was put on the agenda. And I'm here before you to address my concerns with the removal of these two electeds and the direction that our city is headed. It, it seems that the days of education first we've long strayed away from, and we have slowly but surely have prioritized and allowed special interests to dictate who is hurt in the city, who is seen in the city, and who and what communities are allowed to prosper. It couldn't be more evident. One of the city's largest political spenders has a vested interest on who holds seats on this council here, and in addition to that, they have a vested interest in who holds seats in these city council committees as well. I demand that you do not support this item, although I don't see eye to eye with the two electeds that are being recalled, Mayor Protem Juan Viegas and Cecilia Iglesias. It is my responsibility as a resident to recognize injustices, and this is an injustice. I, I am asking that you reject this item, that you do not stay silent, and that you, you go against the corruption of the Police Officers Association. The city is not theirs, it belongs to the residents, and, and I hope that your vote is representative of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan.
There was a time when the Police Association represented our officers, and our officers are good people that need representation, but they did not enter into elections nor politics. They felt that there need be some distance between the working men and women of the police force and those that are elected by the people. The recall to, it's the two of the people, and I'm highly offended that a developer and a police association use it to try to oust two people. While my political view may be a little different, I've learned that these two individuals do listen to the neighborhood. I've seen them listen, not pontificate. And what elected officials that respond to the community, I think, are, are good and should be careful. When you manipulate the process, because the recall to is our tool, it's when we could remove officials because they're corrupt. It's our tool to change laws or whatever, but it's not the two or someone that has a vindictive. We learned that in Washington. It should not happen here in Santa Ana. And that's what we're facing today, that the power of money corrupts, the power of an individual to corrupt, representing and manipulating facts in order to get at people. So, I urge you not to let it happen. We need civilian oversight. We need council members participating there, and those that are interested should be able to, sir, and eliminating the committee, sort of eliminating the oversight layer, so we could watch what's going on. I thought we were heading in a good direction with the Family Justice System, embracing the fact that our families in the city are poor and that they needed help and a lift upward, not to be oppressed with militarization of our police force, to get away from, let's arrest them, put them away, let's say our crime rate is high, and punish the people of the state, of the city for being poor. You know, most of our crimes are economically related, you know, abuse, or domestic violence, these are crimes of the house, and, and the pressure they feel through their housing. So, I hope we could come to the City Council, "I know you guys, you're good guys," you know? "And I've known you for a long time, Miguel." We need to, to do this, but we can't let our political difference and our politic guide our way. We need to, again, look at what the people of the city needs, okay? And we're hurting because we gave a lot of money to one area, and it's taking away from the parks and the salaries of other departments that helped to improve the city. So, I urge you not to fall prey. Stand up and say, "No, you will not tell us what to do." And he publicly did it on the newspaper. Said, "I'm going to tell them what to do." I would sit up and say, "You're going to do what? Get the heck out of my office."
Thank you, Alan. Before we proceed, I just want to ask the camera room if there's any problem with the audio, because I'm getting texts from folks at home that can't hear what we're saying. So, I don't know if we could revisit that. We'll continue the meeting, but if the camera room could please recheck the audio. Again, I understand people at home cannot hear what we're saying. So, with that, let's continue. Let me bring it back to Councilmember Becerra.
Did we just say, sir?
They, apparently, it's since the beginning of the meeting, Alan.
Oh.
Since the beginning of the meeting, they've been having problems with the audio at home.
I just want to be accurate, and that's for conspiracy theory.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hopefully, they can hear me now. When I first saw this item on the agenda, my, my first thought was, this is probably a rational thing in the sense that we have committees where staff comes, they present, and then if, for instance, there's something at a particular committee that is of importance to the council- to the council, that same presentation comes before the full body." It seems like a redundancy. In other cities where I've worked in, say like the city of Los Angeles, committees of the city council actually vote on things, they actually take action. In some cases, public hearings are actually held at the committee level. And in talking with our staff, in fact, Madam City Manager, you have a lot of experience in a neighboring big city like Anaheim, do they have city council committees in their structure of governance?
So, sir, based on your questions, I did a cursory review of Anaheim, Costa Mesa, and Garden Grove, and I could not find where they utilized a standing council committee where the only members of the committee were council members less than a quorum. Irvine does utilize ad hoc committees, and I know from past practice at Anaheim, they've also utilized ad hocks. An ad hoc would be made up of less than a quorum of elected officials, but it would not be a standing committee that continued year after year.
And those ad hoc committees, they typically tend to be focused on specific items, correct?
For accordance and compliance with the Brown Act, to have an ad hoc committee, it must be for a limited purpose and a specific duration.
Okay, so not only a specific purpose, but a sunset date?
Correct.
Okay. And as, as I looked through some of these committees' agendas, just to get an idea of what they covered, a lot of them were canceled. A lot of them didn't even have enough people showing up from this body to actually warrant having the meeting. And one more question for our City Manager, so you have these committee meetings, you have a couple of us that show up, that sit on them. When it comes to staff and all the correlated costs to it, how much would you say that is to man and, you know, put the agendas together, any sort of minutes, anything related to those committees? What would you say the cost comes out to roughly?
Based on the committees that we're talking about and the frequency of the meetings, probably you're looking at an annual expense of about $55,000.
$55,000 to man these committees?
Annually.
Okay. You know, so when I saw this item, then of course, as some of our speakers brought up, you have certain political entities that have decided to politicize this and myopically narrow the focus on members and take the focus away from what I saw as an opportunity to streamline the process. And in fact, I see it more as an opportunity to really focus the sunshine where it should be, which is on this council. So, rather than try to tell the community, "Oh, you didn't go to the XYZ committee? Oh, you missed it." No, you know that the city council meets twice a month, it's an easy opportunity, we meet in the same venue every time, it's a great just place to focus, you know, community input and deliberations from the council. So when I saw this item, I actually leaned towards the idea of disbanding all of these committees. That was where I went to, but I want to hear from my colleagues at this point because I do see a cost savings, I do see an opportunity to streamline, and I also see the opportunity to really focus the sunshine where it should be, which is here with the seven of us on this council.
Mr. Mayor. Mayor Protem.
So, my comments are, Madam City Manager, if we were to do away with these, we would save quite a bit of money on overtime, correct? Because the staff has to be there.
That's the largest component of the cost.
And we have quite a bit of staff. Now, from what I see, you know, a lot of these committees, there is a lot of good work that comes out of these, but sometimes there's just an update. We need an update on graffiti, we need an update on, you know, so forth. And when there's a project, well then, you know, we require, you know, to go through a committee. For example, like the Family Justice Center, we were, we put that through the Public Safety Committee, but a lot of times is, you know, it's just an update, or if there's something else, we talk about the homeless, we talk about the noise ordinance that with members of the Artesia Pilar that helped me with that, that really, really needed to be done. At the current time, I don't know of any big projects that are taking place other than updates on the work we have been doing, and, you know, I would, I would be supportive if we were to do away with all of these committees, and we would have an ad hoc committee when there's something that we need to address, because it does have, it would be like having, you know, focus, a focus group on something, and then we could vet that and move forward. If we feel that we need a committee, well then we can bring it back at a future date, but we haven't tried this. So, those are my thoughts, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Additional comments, Councilor Penyalosa?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam City Clerk, why is this item even on the agenda?
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. The reason why this is on here is because on an annual basis, the council can review the council committee items, and since we had our councilmember Basera added from the special election, we can go ahead and either reorganize the members that are listed on here, and then you could also restructure the committees here. But annually, it looks like this council has reviewed the council committees.
Okay, thank you. I just, I, my thoughts on this is, I was a little confused as to why it was even on the agenda in the first place, but that answered that question, so thank you. I'm like, along with a lot of the members of the community, are big fans, a big fan of these council committees because versus an ad hoc like you see in Irvine or in other cities, you know, these are, are, go on the record, they're public, they're official, and it gives the community multiple layers of additional areas where they could come and give their input and have discussions and, and go on the record about numerous subjects. However, I also thought about the, the different items that have come before us, specifically on the Public Safety Committee. I know that Mayor Protem Villegas mentioned that the Family Justice Center went through the Public Safety Committee, but the reality is that it didn't go through the Public Safety Committee. It was presented as a presentation, but none of the input that was given by the majority of the council committee members were even considered. So that's where I kind of see where Councilmember Basera is kind of, you know, alluding to the fact that there's no decision-making coming from these council committees. However, I'm still supportive of them saying as is, just because I know that the community really enjoys them and likes having that additional layer of government where they could participate and give, you know, constructive input, and it also helps us really dissect things before they come to the, to the council, us as a whole. So, I would, I just want these to remain as is, and if that's not the opinion of my colleagues, then so be it.
Thanks for your comments. Additional comments, Councilor Solario?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, if the motion is going to be to eliminating them all, I'm gonna know on that as well. I do think that these committees do serve a purpose, and they provide a real valuable avenue for the public to give ideas, to follow what we're doing, it's a transparency thing. It's important, we should be having more engagement with our residents rather than less. I could support a restructuring where the ones maybe that work we keep and others that need to be restructured, we can. Some of it is timing too as well, you know, we're starting to look at the next year's budget, how to properly use Measure X, so having the Budget Committee intact, I think, is important. I would note that on that Budget Committee, Councilmember Iglesias is on that committee currently, you know, and a couple others, you know, Penyalosa and myself. And then the other that I want to still keep alive, just because the relationship is broken, we have a Joint Use Committee between council members and school district members, and there's a lot of, lot of unfortunate decision-making that's happening where they're doing things that aren't helpful to us and vice versa, and I know Councilmember Villegas has been helpful in some of those, and, you know, I have a big interest in education as well. I would hate to see that in its entirety vanish. That's not to say that we couldn't restructure that committee, but I think, you know, that's important, and maybe the other ones we restructure to see what would be better, but to throw them all out, I don't think is worthwhile, and I think it would be bad for public engagement and transparency.
Mayor Protem?
That Joint Use Committee, we haven't had one in 18 months. But anyway, I'll make a motion to disband all of them.
Second?
Push the green button if you agree.
Coming.
Sorry, you have to go ahead and then Penyalosa.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
So I, I wanted to listen to all my colleagues, and there's some good compelling arguments on all sides of this, and so, you know, I can't speak too directly to this because I don't sit on any of the committees. And the reason why is because we have committees at the Orange County Water District, similar to OCTA that the mayor sits on. That is a committee form of government over there, and that's what we used to have here with these committees, where you would vet and discuss in detail really complex issues because at the general board meeting, those only last an hour, because by the time you go there, you've already discussed it, the public's had an opportunity to comment, you've had comments from your general counsel, and that's the way it used to function. I think when, there was, there was a time when these committees were completely dormant, right? And, and we kind of reactivated them, and we put them back together, and a lot of good ordinances came out of those, a lot of good public policy, and a lot of good discussion. The difference between an ad hoc and this is exactly what somebody mentioned, is that an ad hoc isn't publicly noticed. That is not a good way to do business. That is not a good way to be transparent, it's not a good way to be open, because you can meet and none of that, there are no minutes held, there's no record, and there's no legal counsel present, or doesn't have to be, there's no requirement, and it doesn't have to comply with the Brown Act. So, you know, for a lot of reasons, the committees, I think, were at one time a very good, had a very good purpose. And I remember when we were going through the recession and this city was about to go and file a Chapter 9 bankruptcy, we were meeting every week, and we had committees that were trying to figure out what, what best direction to take. And so I think we even developed a reserve policy, we decided how we were going to deal with fiscal emergencies. So, I think that right now, what needs to happen is that some of these committees need to be restructured. I am supportive of maybe dismantling them for now and putting them aside because I don't see, I don't, again, directly, because I don't sit on them, I think it's probably not functioning as smoothly as it, as it did in the past, and so to the extent that $55,000 is not a big-ticket item, we just got through spending $900,000 on the Peace Road, and, you know, there are much, much big ticker items, ticket items that we've addressed, I think it's more, is it serving the purpose? And we can't have committees that have decision-making authority, or at least it's very difficult because you have to have more of quorum, right? And you have to give them not just advisory power that we, that our committees have, but actually, you know, discretionary action that they can take as a majority, and we don't have that form of government here. So, to the extent that we disband these, and, you know, we have to remember, in 10 months, we're going to have five new faces here possibly. So that is going to be a much different dynamic, and we're going to have different direction, and things are going to be debated in a different way. And, you know, folks may say, "Let's bring it back, let's, you know, let's create new committees." So I think for the time being, we do need to step back, revisit this again, and take some time and see whether these committees satisfy the public policy areas and the subject matters that we want to discuss in the next year, in the next five years.
Thanks for that. I think we have additional comment from Councilor Penyalosa?
I was just gonna say that, you know, out of the one committee that I do find completely pointless because of their lack of meanings, like the Mayor Protem said, is the Joint Use Council Committee. That one hasn't met, I don't know what, what the deal is, and when they have met, I've listened to some of the recordings, and it's just a weird eagle match between the two bodies. So, I'd be happy dismantling that one and keeping the others as is, status quo until, you know, down the line, but that's, that's my opinion.
Thank you. Let me make a quick comment, and then we'll go ahead and vote. I do believe there's going to be potentially five new council members coming on this council. I think that might be a good opportunity to have this discussion. Right now, I don't sit on any of the committees either. What I do see is that in particular, and I know she's not here today, maybe we want to talk to her later, but I think Councilmember Iglesias is on every single committee. I know we had this discussion, this issue with Councilor Solario some years ago where he was accused of being on too many committees, and, and he, you know, basically was removed from some. I'm not suggesting we do that, because I think that starts to become petty, and that's not the point, but the bigger question is, you know, purpose, and I'd be open to bring it back if there's three members that want to serve on a particular committee and they have purpose and they agree with staff and we all have a discussion, I'd go for that. But at this point, I think it's dysfunctional, some really dysfunctional, others like, like the Public Safety where I think work gets done, I believe I agree with Councilor Penyalosa, a lot of the work was done really not in the committee, because it really can't some of that work. I know that, that, you know, Mayor Protem met with the chief and, and with members of the community, and a whole lot of work that was done outside of the committee. And my hat off to Mayor Protem, because Juan Villegas, I think, did an outstanding job, and now that we see what this Justice Center is and how it serves people, it's wonderful, but it could have happened and probably would have happened anyways. And we all voted for it because we all approved money in the budget, I think it was $300,000 or something like that, and I think ultimately this is where the accountability has to be, right here on this dais. So, so with that, let's go ahead and do the buttons. If you're good, go green. If not, go red.
What was the motions to?
Eliminate them all, for now.
I didn't even vote. I didn't even shut up.
You might have received, you might have. Oh, he said, go ahead. Please, go again.
I'd like to make a substitute motion to just leave the committees as is.
We already voted, though.
Oh.
Okay, I want to vote, no, I'm kidding. I'm kidding. It passes on a four to two. Bad joke. Next council item?
Just for the record, because again, folks can't see that, up there, Councilmember Penyalosa and myself voted no.
And the other four voted yes, and Councilmember Iglesias is absent. What's our next item, Madam Clerk?
85A.
We have a speaker on that. I believe there was consideration for a continuation.
Mr. Mayor, since there's a speaker, since there's a speaker, let's go ahead and have this discussion.
Go ahead, you want to hear the two speakers?
Yes.
John Noble and Kim Sandoval, please. We're on 85A. We started late, but we're almost done, and it's eight o'clock, and Sessi's not here. Let's continue. Just an observation.
Good evening, I'm Kimberly Sandoval. I currently stay at the courtyard, but I'm a long resident of Plaza the Flags. I've met with a lot of you throughout the years. You passed this item, and you guys are stopping us from moving on. You have trucks coming out at nine, 10 o'clock at night and impounding our stuff, blankets, important papers, ID, medication. You guys want to be part of the solution, you're part of the problem. You're stopping us from moving on, because every day we have to go and get this stuff again, because you impound it. You don't let people sleep at night, you take away safe places for females to sleep at night, you're pushing them into the neighborhoods. I don't get it. I hear about what the homeless does, the homeless does this, does that, you know? We're not bad people. I know many of you, we've stopped people from breaking into your cars, we've walked many of your staff out to their cars at night, but we're such bad people. You talk about what homeless does and how bad we are, but you never talk about the good that we do, and how many of your employees like being around us, believe it or not? You guys need to know what's going on out here, because you have no idea. I'm asking 15 minutes privately with you guys to discuss what is going on, because you're not being part of the solution, you're part of the problem. We're talking, I'm tired of hearing figures and numbers and money and this and that, we're talking about people's lives. You can't put an amount on somebody's life, and you can't take all this stuff with you when you go. It's all materialistic things. You can't take it with you when you go. And we all have one person, one employer that we work for. And we all have one person, one employer that we work for and everybody on this panel is forgetting who that person is. And it's him above. What happened to the compassion, the understanding? We're talking people's lives. It could be your sister, your brother, your son, your daughter. I beg you, be part of the solution, not the problem that you are now. Give me fifteen minutes privately and let you know what's going on. Help us get out of here, don't keep us here every day. Don't pass the anti-camping law.
Yeah, this camping ordinances have really made it difficult for a lot of people out there, especially at Santiago Creek where people are getting their stuff confiscated, their blankets, their essentials in the middle of the night. They're freezing out there. They're not going to go away, they get stuff back. Even we have to give them blankets every day, that every time that they go get confiscated, that's theft. And when they get their stuff confiscated, like this lady was saying, their paperwork, it actually creates, it's a worse situation because now you're oppressing people, you're not letting them get back on their feet. This camping ordinance has, you know, it costs millions, twenty-five million to, to do an enforcement of ordinances, that's how much it costs, right? Which it could be alleviated by giving these people, I mean, I advocate for campgrounds, I don't know why, why that can be done. I mean, they're already there for people who say, not in my backyard, well, they're already in your front yard. This oppression of, of people, you know, getting arrested, getting ticketed over and over and over, that they, tickets that they can't pay and turn to warrants, that's criminalizing the homeless. You know, in Proverbs twenty-one thirteen says, whoever closes his ear to the cries of the poor will himself call out and not be answered. It could happen to any one of us, doesn't matter, you know, homelessness doesn't see no collar, financial status, or party. I mean, I know, I, I've met one homeless person that was a council member out there. I have videos of a lot of people. I've been, boots on the ground out there and I see people suffering. Yeah, some of them might not be outstanding citizens, but they are residents of Orange County. And this is just going to aggravate the problem. People are giving up hope because they're being oppressed. And criminalization and jailing people costs more money. Even housing first would actually cost less if we could, if we could implement that. And yeah, every city should have a, a shelter of their own, not just dumping everybody in one place. But in the meantime, you know, you help, you help those people that are, that are out here in your city, you know? It's just, you know, call ourselves sanctuary city, we'll help our homeless from Orange County. And if they're from other cities, help them get back in their own cities. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to take a moment and apologize for the comment I made about Councilwoman Iglesias and the time. It was inappropriate, let's just continue with our business. So with that, I wanted to bring this back. I know that Councilor Jose Solorio requested to speak on this. I know it's something dear to Councilmember Iglesias as well, I believe, so let me yield to you, Councilor Solorio.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And as we had talked earlier, because she wasn't here, I was thinking about continuing the item, but since we had speakers, I think we, we should address it. First, Mr. Noble, I know that you're a good actor, you know, standing side by side the homeless folks and the city, I think, you know, is, is a good actor and we have a shelter, we have wraparound services, we have a number of affordable housing units, including those focused on homeless and veterans and others. But I think also, we know more and more, it's not compassionate just to let folks suffer out on the streets. This item isn't about passing a new camping ordinance, we already have one. This ordinance is about enforcing the laws that we have related to that and panhandling, which is often very unsafe. But a part of this item here also talks about that all those service, enforcement services should be accompanied with an educational component that talks about mental health, that talks about drug treatment opportunities, housing services. I'm a full supporter of the Housing First model. We also ensure as often as possible that our PD go out with social service folks, or if you know, folks with a soft touch to, to speak. So I think that's more humane rather than letting folks suffer. We also, you know, not long ago here in Santa Ana passed Measure X where we pledged to our citizens that we were going to do more to enforce that these type of laws, we have to do right by that. We also have a, a shelter that we built for the sole purpose of offering these enforcement and education services. And, you know, I think the public often asks, well, why do we still have, have so many? And, you know, PD is doing more and more. And some cynically will say, well, they're all out there because, you know, the city and the police department, let them be out there. And I think some areas are more unsafe than others. You know, I would just ask that our, our city manager continue to work with our police department to identify, you know, the twenty to thirty hotspots in our city so that those areas aren't heavily concentrated and causing the kinds of problems that we have, especially in near schools, in areas frequently visited by families and children. And there's crazy stuff going on out there. I recently ran into a, one of the security officers from Allied and was asking him how it's going on in the parks. And apparently recently, one person with, you know, very good instincts, there was a homeless person at Santiago Park with a blowtorch. And yeah, that individual, because, you know, he doesn't carry a gun, couldn't do certain things, but he knew how to spot it out, he knew how to take care of it and coordinate with city staff and PD to eliminate a blowtorch that, you know, given the winds and everything else could have caused a lot of, you know, property or personal damage. So I think we need to address things like that. And also, you know, on South Main, we have continuous issues. I know there was one constituent that said, how many more emails do we need from South Main businesspeople for the Santa Police Department to focus more attention and, and address that? I know legally, we're also, you know, working on MHA because that is a hotspot of drastic proportions. So I know we, we're focused on that, where we clearly have to do more. And then that Santiago Creek, which isn't a very big area, it's, you know, it's probably the public space that solely our police department is in charge of enforcing anti-camping laws. And I know we go out there once a month or whatever, we do humongous cleanups, but if we don't go after more often, they just keep coming back. And all we do is keep spending dollars and dollars and overtime and we, for these hotspots, I think we just have to be a little bit more creative, have more of a presence, maybe have vehicles out there. There's been talks about maybe taking out some of our mobile stations out there, maybe they're temporary substations in these hotspots because the calls, the incidents are, you know, it's too much, too much. And so, for that reason, I just wanted to, you know, have this so we can, as a council, give, you know, our insights and thoughts to, to, to our staff via our city manager. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilman Penialosa and then Vicera.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Solorio, for putting this item on the agenda. I also agree that there needs to be a higher emphasis and more of a priority on enforcing anti-camping laws that are already in the books and the loitering that we see throughout our city. Like I mentioned earlier, and I'll mention it again, but, you know, similar to Santiago Creek cleanup, we should do those cleanups throughout the city, focus on a street on one day or focus on another street on another day and be visibly present so that we could enforce these laws and, and clean up areas and the hotspots when we need to. The, all of the emails, constant emails and Facebook messages I get from constituents in the community is that nobody is doing anything about these numerous encampments and people loitering in public spaces whenever they're, they're requested. We have shelter beds available, we should be able to relocate people to these shelter beds. And, and the, one of the messages that was brought up, I just opened it and looked for it, was at Windsor Park. This whole week, daily, I've been seeing constant pictures and messages of, of individual at Windsor Park in one of the diamond areas, the baseball diamonds. And today I went to go pull it up just now to show you guys and, or tell you guys about it. And now, you know, it says, more than seventy-two hours later, and I'm still reporting the same individual to, through the app, he has made Windsor Park his home, it's Tuesday afternoon and kids are starting soccer and baseball practice and he's still there. Now there's a full encampment and an actual tent built up on the actual baseball diamond. These are the things that our constituents tell us about every single day and it seems like nobody moves when, when these things are requested. Nobody is out there constantly doing proactive enforcement so these things don't happen and just linger for days on end. And those are my comments. I would like to see more of an aggressive approach to this, enforcing all of our, our laws, anti, you know, camping, panhandling, and that, those are my comments.
Additional comments? Councilmember Vicera, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too want to thank Councilmember Solorio for bringing this item for discussion before us this evening. I, I think what this item says is very serious. We're saying that our police are not fully enforcing our anti-camping and anti-panhandling laws. Excuse me. And, and, and the issue with that, I mean, you know, many of you know, we pay our police pretty well, so we would expect the best service from them. Having said that, I also don't like to give, you know, just kind of empty direction that says, go, go cure cancer, go fix stuff. I, I think we need to be a little more focused in, in what we're doing and what we're directing. I know that when I meet with staff, a lot of times, they look to us for direction, but they, really genuinely, they're not just telling us that to make us feel good, they really want direction. They want to know, which way should they go? And I think that's a responsibility that we all have up here. Having said that, you know, one thing I was very fortunate to come across was a report that our PD commissioned from the University of North Texas back in January of 2015. And in that report, it talked about patrol levels and the idea that if we had certain suitable patrol levels or staff on patrol, that we can reduce our call times. And as I mentioned earlier, when the chief gave his presentation, I think that's a very important item. I mean, we need our police to not only provide professional service, but we also need it to be prompt, and I think those things go hand in hand. One thing, my understanding, and I, I would defer to PD to correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is right now, we have one hundred and forty-nine officers on patrol. And the report that, that was commissioned back in 2015 called for a gradual increase for officers on patrol through calendar, or through fiscal year 2019, 2020, to have us at one hundred and eighty-six officers. So, if the one hundred and forty-nine number is true, then we're far short of that. And part of the goals of the, from that report included five-minute response times for Priority One calls, which were about two minutes over, ten-minute for Priority Two calls, which were almost a minute over, but on Priority Three calls, we beat that by four minutes. The goal was thirty-five minutes and we're about four and a half minutes under that. So, right now, our Priority One and Priority Two were deficient, but our Priority Three calls, we're doing well on. Priority One calls are the emergency calls, those are the, the most important calls. So, having said that, I, you know, again, I appreciate Councilman Solorio bringing this up, but I think that when we bring this up, I, I'm hoping that by the time we're done discussing this among the seven of us, that staff walks away with clear marching orders as to how to address the issue and not just make grand proclamations. So, I leave it to you guys, thank you.
And I think on that point, just.
Go ahead.
Just as a follow-up, it is full enforcement because the community doesn't think we're doing any enforcement. But if you read towards the end of this, it is saying that especially areas where there's a lot of children around, the, the idea of near parks, near, near schools should be a sensitive area and hotspots. And so I mentioned the twenty, or twenty to thirty that we should be looking at. And so if you have other specific areas where you think they should be doing enforcement via our city manager is, you know, this would be a good time to do it. And again, I'm just thinking, just because it is resource-intensive, that looking at hotspot areas or areas where, with a lot of families and children, and I think you've, what we've all been seeing that parents particularly from the Godenas High School and surrounding areas, they've been very focused on it because they reported, I think it was their school police chief, I, I think they're almost like three times the number of complaints around their schools related to homelessness. And they do have a small, you know, police force, but really more in-school specific. It's the city's responsibility or PD's to, you know, provide security around it. And so, that's why the idea around children, families, and some hotspots would be good. If you have other areas on where you think that they should focus on, now would be a great time to share that.
Well, Councilman Solorio, I think the majority of the city is a hotspot. I, I don't think there's many places in the city that you don't see some sort of encampment or, or loitering or any other sort of homeless-related items. So I, I think it would be hard to narrow it down, frankly.
So just more city-wide enforcement you want to see or not?
Well, I want to see enforcement of those laws. That's why I appreciate you bringing that forward.
Excellent, thank you.
Like I said, I, I think that really right now, what we need to do is bolster our patrol because I think that in doing that, we could achieve what you're asking for.
I agree with that as well.
Go ahead, Councilman Penialosa, and then Vince.
And, and I want to also put it out there that I, this isn't just, I'm not saying that all the other departments have to go out there and enforce their laws, but brings me back to the, if you see something, say something. It shouldn't just be on, on police departments' hands to, to handle the issue, but Public Works, Parks and Rec, you guys are out there every single day in our parks, on our streets. Don't just drive by and, and blindly and ignore the, these situations. Say something, report it, make it a note to let somebody know at the end of the day, whoever needs to take care of it so that it could be addressed. With, with that said, Madam City Manager, does City Outreach, is that the name of the, the program that we use, what was it?
City Net.
City Net.
City Net.
City Net. So City Net, are they at all, do they go out with our Quality of Life team?
They do both. They will partner and go out with Colt, but they also go out on their own as well.
Okay. Because two weeks ago, when I was driving home from, from here from City Hall, I don't know if you recall, that there was a homeless individual asleep on the sidewalk in the middle of the day and there was kids, children walking home from school, having to step onto the street to walk around. The individual laid out in the middle of the sidewalk off Flower Street in Edinger. And I put in the request and, and CDA and Mr. Stephen Mendoza, you guys were all very helpful in being out there quickly, but the, the issue I have is that when staff came out, we called into City Net and City Net sent out two young girls, probably eighteen, nineteen years old, and very tiny, and approached this individual and kind of just, you know, tapped them, hey, sir, and he turned the other way and was like, not interested and waved his arm and they were like, well, here's our card. And they got in the car and they were going to leave. And, and I stopped them and I was like, wait a minute, so this is, this is, and they're like, yeah, we'll slowly, you know, try to make that, that connection and build a relationship with this person. So, if I hadn't been there, they would have just left for the day because they gave him a business card and, and that was it, and that individual would have stayed there for the entire day while children of Santa Ana are having to step over him and walking, and walking onto their street to get around this individual in the middle of the day because it is causing a safety concern for our children and that is a problem here. So, I, you know, are we doing an effort to see if a, a police officer or a Public Works employee could go out with City Net when, when it's a, a male and it's, it's the, the two young girls with City Net? I know we can't control who City Net staffs, but, you know, we're not going to make much of, of an effort if, if this is what's happening around the city.
If they can choose who they want to help, I should have been out a long time ago. The City Net has.
Please, you already spoke. Councilmember Vince Armiento, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Wait, Madam City Manager, the questions, the questions weren't answered?
Yeah, go ahead and answer.
Thank you. Councilmember, City Net's role is actually to go out and establish a relationship with the homeless and build trust and offer services. And they're trained professionals, so regardless if you think they're petite young women, they are trained in their profession to do that role. In regards to that specific example, the individual was not left on the sidewalk that day.
The, the, and the reason I ask this, because I'm not judging that the two girls can't do their job, but they, they said it to me. They're like, yeah, sometimes we're scared, you know, sometimes we don't, you know, we don't have any, sometimes we've been, you know, harassed and yelled at by, by the individual we're trying to approach and sometimes it is just two of us and sometimes it's just one. And, you know, they did say that they do many times fear, you know, approach the individual with fear and, and if they're not. with fear, and if they're not, they don't feel comfortable approaching the individual, they just get up and leave. So that's why I mentioned that, not that I personally thought, but they told me that oftentimes, they do have fear in approaching because of the state that the individual's in, so they'll just kind of, you know, walk away. So that's why I'm saying that we should make an effort to see if an individual from COLT team, Quality of Life team, police officer, whether it's a public works employer or a police officer, could go out with the girls and see if there's going to be additional support needed.
And they do, as I mentioned before, they do both because part of the strategy is sometimes homeless individuals will engage with CityNet without police presence, or they won't engage with CityNet with police presence. So that's why we do a dual strategy on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for those questions and comments, Councilwoman Vince Armiento.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. So I came into this discussion a little late, but, you know, just reading this, and I think this was on a previous agenda. I think it's coming from a good place. I think that the intentions are well, you know, meaning, but I'm a little confused on the direction. So I have a couple of questions for you, Madam City Manager. Are items like anti-camping, anti-panhandling, protecting our children, are those not a top priority for you?
I am not aware of any directive that I've ever issued or our police chief has ever issued that told officers to not fully enforce all of the laws, with the exception of a period of time before I was here when you were suspended from enforcing your anti-camping as a result of a lack of shelter beds.
So let me rephrase this. So since you've been here, and you've discussed this issue ad nauseam with all of us in open session, in public session, and all the emails and all the data and everything that shows that right now homelessness is probably the most important issue to all of our residents, is that, do you see it any other way than it being one of, if not the, top priority on your list of things to do?
No, absolutely. You've made it very clear it's a top priority.
Okay. And are you giving direction to our chief of police that enforcing anti-camping and anti-panhandling and making sure that our residents, especially our children and families, are safe, is that something that you've conveyed to the chief?
That's the absolute direction. There hasn't been any other direction.
So, you know, I don't want to mislead the public because I think the perception is different that by saying, "Hey, let's do this," that means that we haven't done it. And so I don't want to be contrary to what direction I think all of us have been compelling you to do. We may have different approaches on how we, you know, meet these ends or, you know, what tools we use to approach these, but I think that, you know, what's important is that we all, I think, have said this in one form or another, and to, you know, I guess I'll step back a little bit. These 85A, 85 agenda items are council-driven items that I always thought were raised when we weren't addressing something, right? So they were to sort of fill a vacuum of some subject matter or something that we needed to give you specific direction on that wasn't being addressed. So I don't want the public to think that you haven't had direction from us, you're not giving the chief direction, the chief isn't executing the direction that he's received, both from the council and the city manager. So I just don't want that to be confusing, and that's where I think that we may be if we handle this the wrong way. I do see a couple of novel elements that I haven't seen in the past, and I, you know, I want to thank the councilmen for including this. An education component should be included to offer drug treatment and mental health and housing services to individuals violating these laws. I think those are things that maybe weren't included in the list or the palette of things that we've given you to consider, but I do think that, you know, I just don't want us to misuse the 85A process because I think it should be limited to things that we, you know, haven't given staff direction on. So those are my thoughts, and, you know, I think that to the extent we can pull out some things that you haven't had clarity on from us, but I think, I don't know how much more clearly to make these items a priority. I mean, we, all of us, I think, have exhausted sometimes your patience and exhausted, you know, the patience of all of our staff because we just want you to understand the constituents and residents come to us, and I can't tell you that, you know, homelessness probably outnumbers any of the other items that I'm addressing, but, you know, you know, 10 to 1, 20, 20 to 1. So it is just, you know, the most critical issue, but I think that we've done a very, very clear job, and if we haven't, then shame on us. But I don't think that that's the case. I think that you've, you know, completely understood the direction, but that's, you know, those are my thoughts, and maybe we, you know, we pull these other two items out and include those on your list of things that we can address as well.
Additional comments? Councilor Solario?
I'd like to respond to that.
Just Solario, please, go ahead.
And I do know you missed, you know, part of our comments earlier. You know, it's one of those things, you know, perception is reality, and one of the things with all my outreach in the community, probably half of our residents don't think we enforce anti-camping laws. They don't think we enforce panhandling laws because on a daily basis, we see them out there. You know, I mentioned how the schools and the organizing of the parents, their school police chief has come out, their complaints are up 300%. And on a given night, probably like tonight, there's probably over 500 camps that we have around town, including at the hotspots, go to the, you know, some of the parks that Councilmember Penylosa said, go to Santiago Creek, you know, go down by, you know, South Main, go by, you know, the UP Railroad Yard. We have literally hundreds of camps, and so the community wonders, well, if we enforce our laws, why are they there? And so maybe we just need to do something differently, or as Councilmember Becerra said, maybe we need to add more patrol officers to help. But to say that we were good, that we don't need to address more fully or aggressively or in a pointed manner, anti-camping laws, I mean, I didn't know that we, you know, had to check that off. So this item is really just to say, look, we don't have endless resources to, from one day to another, work with all those encampments, that we have to focus in certain areas with the focus around children and families. So that's what this item is all about because, you know, our community, I think, they're highly frustrated, and I think we all know that, and clearly, there are many, many encampments through our city, and, you know, this is just an effort to see if as a council, we have other thoughts on how to help.
All right. Additional comment or thought? I think we've all, go ahead, Mayor Protem.
Nope, just want to move on to the next item.
Mayor, you may want to consider continuing 85B and 85C since Councilmember Glacius is not present. Those were of interest to both items.
I would entertain such a motion. Okay, is it unanimous? It's unanimous, thank you. 85 Diaz and David, Councilmember Becerra and Penylosa, who wants to go first? And we have a speakers, okay. Kim Sandoval, followed by Ty Phan, followed by Lou Noble, followed by Claudio Gallegos.
Good evening, councilmembers, Mayor Protem, Mayor Palillo. My name is Ty Phan. I'm here as a resident of the city in my individual capacity, as a private resident over on the west side. I, like most of the residents, support a humane approach to solving homelessness, but it's not something that the city can do alone. I live about a mile and a half away from the proposed Yale Shelter. I sit on the board for the Heritage Museum of Orange County, one of the gems of Santa Ana, and everyone should visit, but that's about a half a mile away. I spoke to our executive director, and we're really worried about the fact that the shelter, which none of the residents in the area want, is going into an industrial area with a lot of empty space that's not patrolled at night. Reading the county's explanation of security and what's going to happen is, well, they say there's going to be 24-hour security around the shelter, but there isn't going to be any security in the surrounding neighborhood. They specifically say in their facts that the Santa Ana Police Department is responsible for anything that happens around the shelter, meaning the Heritage Museum, which doesn't have full-time security and much of it is open to the outdoors. Now, we're going to have to spend nonprofit dollars to find a way to prevent loitering, to prevent others from jumping our fences. The industrial areas, there's a lot of empty space there at night, and that means that there's going to be a lot of loitering, camping, people hiding out because the shelter is not going to provide security for the surrounding areas. As you know, the city of Santa Ana has been bearing the brunt financially, physically, emotionally of the homelessness crisis. We understand that with the settlement, the South Spa is supposed to take on their proportional burden of this crisis, yet they're refusing to do so. I really appreciate Councilmember Becerra and Councilmember Penylosa for bringing this up because it is time, as you well know, to stand up to the county and say, "No more." We deserve better. Our board of supervisors supposed to represent us as well as South County, so we need to stand up to them, and we need to say, "Our residents matter too. There are lots of empty spaces and open spots in South County. They can find plenty of county land there, and until they do so, they should not be opening any shelters that they are not properly staffing, properly caring for, and not properly protecting the residents of our city." Thank you.
Thanks for that. I called on others. Are you here? Claudio, you're here. Is anybody else here? Lou, come on up right after Claudio, please.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I come here on behalf of Congressman Lou Correa and his statement regarding the 85D tonight opposing the Yale Shelter. The congressman supports solving this homeless crisis. He believes we all need to come together to find a humane solution. With that, he also believes that this solution needs to be equitable. And when he went and attended the hearing with Judge Carter, that is what the congressman had in mind. Unfortunately, it seems South Orange County continues to act in bad faith. With that, we, the official position of Congressman Lou Correa is to oppose the Yale Shelter until South Orange County steps up and does their fair share to help solve this homeless crisis. We support this item, 85D. We thank Councilmen Becerra and Councilmen Penylosa for taking this on, and we encourage the council to support them as well. Thank you.
Thanks for that, Lou.
Again, Proverbs 21:13, whoever closes his ear to cry over poor will himself cry out and will not be heard. Sanctuary city, well, I don't think we're a sanctuary city anymore. Our homeless community are suffering out there. I know that if you look back at a record, talking to the board supervisors, I did mention that every city should have their own shelters. And they should. There shouldn't be a burden to just one city because that's when we get the community outraged. But we have seen shelters monitor, like Anaheim Salvation Army. People are not loitering out there because now they have a place to go. It just has to be more humane inside. I see that a lot of the shelters are kicking people out for 30 days for any little thing. So that has to be addressed, that the shelters shouldn't be just a cycle of, you know, revolving doors. There should be an exit to that. And I was going to talk about discussing the program that you're thinking about, work program. I think a lot of the homeless out there want to work, but the oppressive tactics that have been taken through that camping ordinance of taking their stuff, confiscating their property, not giving them their stuff, losing, you know, a lot of their paperwork, and now getting back on their feet is harder for them. So, yeah, the camping ordinance should be in place if there's facilities available, and those who are not from the certain city should be helped to return to their own city or at least, you know, have other organizations help them. CityNet has been overcrowded with a list that now they, all the people are just giving up hope because even those who want to go into the shelters are not given the ability to go in because there is no beds available. People are getting thrown out of the shelters just to make room for others to come in. That's not the solution either. I believe that, you know, we'll keep going to the board supervisors and ask, you know, letting them know that every, I mean, the deal with the judge is just not feasible when there's 40% that are going to be out there criminalized. Not all homeless are criminals. Camping ordinance is making them criminals, and that is not so. They're being so oppressed that they're giving up hope, and hopefully that, you know, people look into their heart and mind and realize that these people need help, not incarceration because jails are not the answer. So, and law enforcement is not the answer either. It costs more, like we have heard, 25 million, 13,000 people arrested. They just go through the system. Jails are becoming revolving doors too. People say, "Well, the camping ordinance are not working." Well, that's because the police do enforce those laws, but people are back in the streets within days. So it's not helping any. So I think more education to the public on why a lot of, you know, a lot of these are unconstitutional, and they have to realize that it's got to be more humane to get them in and out of those shelters to a proper solution. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So the mayor stepped off for a quick second, so we're going to continue with Councilmember Becerra and Councilmember Penylosa. This is your item.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Santa Ana operates a city-run shelter near Warner and Red Hill, and if you go by there, you wouldn't even notice it was there. There aren't any folks outside, there are no shopping carts, there's no encampments, nobody's loitering outside. Meanwhile, the county operates a courtyard, which is about 400 feet from here, and MHA on South Main, which is about 250 feet from the folks in the Delhi neighborhood. Now, those facilities are very noticeable. You don't need their address. You can find them very easily. There are people hanging out outside, there are encampments. In fact, there's a picture probably many of you have seen circulated on social media where you've got a guy sleeping under the MHA sign on South Main. So it's very clear it's happening. Nothing that the county says gives me comfort when they tell me that the Yale Street Shelter will be run better, that they're going to do a better job. Meanwhile, they let the courtyard and MHA function the way it does. They have no concern for the negative impact that it has on the surrounding communities, Santa Ana communities, our residents, and our businesses are impacted. I want to thank all the residents from Santa Ana that went to the board of supervisors meeting last Tuesday. You know, when Irvine came out in full force, it's because they knew what the county was bringing, and they fought it tooth and nail, and now the county said, "Well, let's just go ahead and go back to our old stomping grounds in Santa Ana, and that's not right, and it's not fair." You know, Santa Ana has been leading the way when it comes to a compassionate way of addressing homelessness. We have over 81 permanent supportive housing units and another 280 in the pipeline. And I'll bet you right now, there's no other jurisdiction in Orange County that has done as much for the homeless as we have. With that being said, I want to thank Councilmember Penylosa for working with me on this item and bringing it before us. I would like to see us direct staff to come back with a resolution so that we can show the community that we, as a council, all agree that this shelter should not be placed here in Santa Ana until South Orange County does their fair share.
Additional comment? Councilperson Penylosa, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Becerra, for your leadership on this item. I agree 100% with everything that was said by Councilmember Becerra. This is something that, you know, until the South County, the South County Spa, the South Spa of the county does their fair share in addressing this homeless, this regional homeless crisis, I don't want to see us do more. You know, until the county could prove that they could run a facility without seeing these problems spill out to the neighboring surroundings, I don't want to see more county ran facilities in our city. And... And like Councilmember Basera, I also want to thank all the residents that went out to speak at the Board of Supervisors last week. Unfortunately, there were a lot of lies said from that dais, and, you know, I wasn't allowed to speak. Councilwoman Iglesias wasn't allowed to speak because we arrived after the item had started. You know, they suppressed our freedom of speech and to give our opinion at the Board of Supervisors, which is unfortunate. And I want to set the record straight that this Santa Ana City Council, nor the previous one, ever approved an item for a homeless shelter at Yale Street. In 2016, the city did enter into an MOU with the county to explore potential shelter on West Central. This project was never materialized. Alternative sites were looked at, and the county moved forward with pursuing the Yale Street without keeping the city apprised of their actions. At one point, the county via a letter from Supervisor Andrew Doe informed the city they were not proceeding with Yale, but continued with the project as a result of the city, but continued with the project, and as a result, the city terminated the MOU. Our city has carried a far greater burden than any other city in this county. We are spending an estimated $26 million a year on homeless, addressing the homeless crisis. We have a city shelter serving our city's homeless, and all other cities should do the same. The county should follow through with its plan for homeless services to be regionally dispersed in all three spas and stop unfairly and disproportionately affecting our community. Late last year, I went up to Sacramento to participate in the League of California Cities' Solution to Homelessness Conference. I ran into Lisa Bartlett there, which is the supervisor that oversees the South County District, and she asked me, "How can we help in Santa Ana? What can we do?" Well, for one, at least bother the comment on the dozens of speakers that came to your Board of Supervisors chambers to speak in opposition of the Yale Street site and asked for South County to step up. She remained silent. So it is clear to me that the county of Orange and the Board of Supervisors do not care about Santa Ana and do not have any desire to run a shelter appropriately in Santa Ana. So I, along with Councilmember Basera, would like to officially direct the city manager to draft up a resolution to oppose the Yale Site Shelter until South County could show that they're going to step up to the plate and build a shelter of their own, and the county could spread out the services proportionately. You know, it's unfortunate that we have to go down this road. We saw what Irvine did. They busted in hundreds of people to the Board of Supervisors meeting, and they listened. The Board of Supervisors listened, but they won't listen to us. So, you know, with that said...
Let's see if there's other comment, but thank you for presenting it as well as you have. Councilman Vince Armiento, then Jose Solario, then Mayor Protem, then myself.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I do want to thank the two council members that raised this, and so I think what we want to do is make sure we give staff clear direction, and so this is certainly appropriate for us to do because, again, I think many of us, and I know I've been sort of a consistent voice, and I was, you know, where I don't think that it's our obligation anymore. I've always said that the vested responsibility for these social services lies with the county, and we've certainly done a disproportionate amount of our share. And, you know, what's interesting is that in 2016, when this, when the courtyard was opened up, it was opened up in probably 30 to 60 days, and it was right on the eve of an election. And it was a very close election that the supervisor had with one of our former colleagues. And so now, you know, fast forward four years later, and we want to put another shelter in Santa Ana, right on the eve of another election. So it's unfortunate that these, the timing may or may not be coincidental, but it's, you know, it certainly now we have four years to contemplate how these, how the courtyard's been run, and it really is shameful to see. And I think to the folks who spoke, who are part of the homeless community, you know, we've had unspeakable conditions there, and there's been, you know, a death there, and there's been crimes committed there, there's been rapes committed there, and I don't trust these folks to continue operating our city just generally, right? I think you have a number of county agencies that are just operating way below what the standard of care is for any, any public agency. But I think just backing up from that, I think even if they did run it appropriately and the way you should, why is Santa Ana being singled out as the only city that needs to bear this responsibility? I think the central spa contains nine other cities. I think that, you know, there was a spot identified that was a 100-acre site in Irvine near the Great Park that was next to Second Harvest, and it was going to be a very isolated space, but, you know, folks were busting, and as was said, you know, everybody backed off. The problem that, what we saw there was that this board of supervisors really does, you know, they favor voices that come out and speak to them, not the compelling reason that our children and our families deserve the same equity that those in South County do. And I think that, you know, maybe our families don't have the time to miss a day of work to go and spend at a Board of Supervisors meeting, and maybe other affluent communities do. But that doesn't mean that our families are any less valuable and our children aren't any less precious. So it's up to us to speak on their behalf. I wasn't going to say anything, but I know that, you know, we have our new communications person I want to thank, Paul Ekins, for helping me draft an op-ed that was submitted, I think, yesterday for the Register and the Voice of OC and other media outlets stating my public opposition to the shelter because it's been a consistent policy position that I've had. So I did have one question for the city attorney regarding, you know, this, you know, SB2 allows them to put it by right, but reconfiguring the SB2 zone, is that something that would prevent the timing of this from moving forward, or is that, are we too far down this path now? Because, again, we've had other properties in the past that have been purchased and intended for this, and they backed off, right? There was the Normandy site in, right off of Grand, so any thoughts on that?
Well, I know that City Council has given us some policy direction on looking at our SB2 ordinance to look both at the caps that we have on the beds and also to look at whether we have the legal authority to restrict, whether we can restrict the beds built in those shelters and SB2 zones. Two people that are coming from Santa Ana, we're actively working on that right now. I know a couple of times we've discussed here in public whether the county has preemptive land use authority or not. We have heard the county say a few times that they don't want to build shelters in communities that don't want to work with them, and so I think we have to play this out and work with them to see that they can hear our opposition on this project, if that opposition is coming from the council and the residents. But it has been the experience so far that they have not exercised that preemptive power, and I, you know, from different sources, understand that they don't, maybe don't all agree that that should be used or shouldn't be used. I don't, I don't know for sure, but I believe that if they were going to use their authority to build a homeless shelter, they might be able to do that, and they don't necessarily have to do it within an SB2 zone.
Okay. And we've, we're obviously doing our share already with the Link, with the Armory, with Wise Place, with the Salvation Army, all these other, and all the permanent supportive housing units that we have as well. So it's not that we're saying we're not going to do anything any longer.
I think when you look at, on a percentage-wise, the point-in-time count and the number of individuals that were identified as being homeless within the city of Santa Ana, and you look at the fact that Santa Ana provides over 900 beds, so if you look at that on a percentage-wise, Santa Ana is doing far more than its fair share. It's providing over 50% shelter spaces for these individuals, whereas other communities are not even coming close to that.
And with that, I am very supportive of the direction. Thank you.
Additional comment? Councilman Solario?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to thank councilmembers Basera and Penylosa for putting this on the agenda. I also want to thank everybody from San Unified that went to the last Board of Supervisors meeting, some missing work or having to make arrangements to get there. In particular, the Goddinas High School PTSO did an amazing job doing what they did and making the case via the media about the situation, so I'm very proud of all of them. Some of us previously did, you know, support the MOU that Councilmember Penylosa mentioned, but again, that was really with a focus on a different site, as well as the circumstances have changed. When that was done, that was before the city had committed to building the Link so that we can enforce our anti-camping laws. We have the Link now. That's new. And then, you know, based off of the success of our federal judge, other cities have stepped up and started to do shelters in their cities, and so that relieves some pressure as well, and that should mean that, you know, we shouldn't have one, another one here in Santa Ana. I also think that this is a great policy position, and, you know, who knows whether the county will listen to our opposition or not. I'm hopeful, like City Attorney Sonia Carvajal Rubio mentioned, that maybe they won't want to take that preemptive action and push this, but if that is not the case, we also need to continue looking at legal and other advocacy measures in partnership with our school partners. I know San Unified is, I think, very interested in continuing the fight, so we ought to work with them. Also, many of our issues that we have are based on the county jail and how inmates are released. And finally, but, you know, equal is important, we do have the courtyard that, yes, not very well managed and many issues there, but the residents that are there are people too, and we need to ensure that they humanely are taken somewhere else when the county does close the courtyard because there are significant ADA and other issues with the courtyard, and I do care very much about what we do with the individuals there, but if that facility or individuals are moved, it doesn't have to be to Santa Ana. It could be another community. It could be Back to Motels. It could be to these Be Well new centers that they're starting. It could be, you know, Fairview Developmental Center. There are spaces over there. I do want to, though, just ensure that as part of all this but separate, that our city staff and my colleagues think about what we ought to do with individuals there when that transition occurs, but I do wholeheartedly support this because I think it's time for other cities to step up, and we want the county to be helpful, and we want them to listen to our residents and our council. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me just add that I think we definitely have to move forward aggressively. I know that, you know, homelessness is something we talk about virtually at every close session, every time we get together, and even though we're making statistically progress because we can show more arrests, we can show, you know, more beds, we can show more interaction and intervention, the reality is that, I don't know, I think the problem's getting worse, not better. I mean, somehow there's either more migration occurring into the city, and so we somehow handle 100, but now there's 200 to replace those. So somehow we have to, I believe, be more aggressive to get out ahead of the problem, and certainly, you know, the county is not doing, I believe, their right by us. Today, we were in court before Judge Dave Carter on an active lawsuit, and, you know, we, I think, did well advocating behalf of the city, in particular, our Deputy Chief Kaminsky was there, our city attorney, you know, both Sonia and John were there, our city managers was there, I was there, and I believe we stood up for the city in front of the judge, in front of the courtroom. But our problems are out in the street, so we're going to continue to battle, you know, fights on all grounds. In this case, I think this is an appropriate step, an appropriate action. Certain aspects of it are new, others are not, and unfortunately, the, you know, the problem, again, is getting worse, not better. So I believe that through the additional officers that we hired, you know, through the work that the city council is doing and the level of interest that we've taken, because there's a very high level of interest, which is really the right position for the city. So with that, I believe there's a clear direction. Would you all like to see a vote from the city council? Because I'd like to vote for this, if you need a vote. Not necessary?
Not necessary.
All right, well, we'll vote when you bring back a specific action, and I expect it'll be unanimous. So with that, let's move on to the next item.
Housing Authority.
Housing Authority, they say they don't want us to push anything. We'll push it when it comes back with a specific action.
Mayor?
Right now, we're unanimous in direction. So with that, let me convene the Housing Authority meeting. I'd entertain a motion on the special meeting, and I'd request an excused absence for Councilmember Iglesias. And item number three is to receive and file quarterly report on the housing voucher program. I would entertain a motion. Motion by Armiento, second by Mayor Protem. Is it unanimous? Motion carries unanimously. That means they're all green if they were green. So with that, business calendar, have we already done that, Madam Clerk?
Correct. And, no, the business calendar, number four, adopt the resolution.
I entertain a motion on item number four.
Move.
Those in favor, is it unanimous? Motion is unanimous. Item number five, it's an agreement with Yarding Systems for a Housing Authority Management Software. Is there a motion?
So move.
I'll second.
Is it unanimous? Motion carries unanimously. Seeing no Housing Authority member comments, I will adjourn and call to order the successor agency, and I would entertain a motion on the special meeting minutes, excused absences.
So move.
We have motion?
Second.
Is it unanimous? Motion is unanimous. Now, on the business calendar for the successor agency, item number three, I entertain a motion. Second by Solario. Is it unanimous? No opposition, it's unanimous. Now, having no comments, we'll bring it back to the city council meeting. We have Peter Katz. Come on down, Peter. And then after that, it'll be city manager comments.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to say a few things on a political level here. You know, on a national level, if you go back 70 years, 40 years of the White House were controlled by Republicans, 30 by Democrats. If you go back 90 years, 50 were controlled by Democrats, 40 by Republicans. If you go back 100 years, it's dead even. So that means all politics is local, and so we have to be careful of how we govern. And the mayor brought this up early, that next year, four or five council members will be replaced based on the election coming up, and I want to remind the public to get out and vote, register the vote, make sure you look at your ballot that you got at home because if you've gone to the DMV in the last year, they've been automatically changing your registration. If your party registration is not right, you need to correct that. You can correct that actually on Election Day, and it's a little tiny code that's on the back where your address is, so you need to check that. But what I want to do here is a couple of things, is I want to thank Vince for your time on the council, your steady leadership as far as keeping us out of legal lawsuits and troubles, and I'm going to miss your guidance. And Mr. Palito, I've known you for a long time and many years, and I'm going to miss your sardonic sense of humor, and even though we have these midnight meetings, you chair a great meeting, you try to get a consensus with a divided council and bring people together, and I hope, but what my first sight is that the next mayor, these meetings will go to 3:00 and 4:00 in the morning. So we have to find a way to come together on issues, so we have to start looking in the mirror and see how, when we sit out in this audience and how you guys act up here. And Mr. Penylosa, you're a young man, I'm going to single out something here of what happened at the last general meeting. You supported a project, 2525 North Main Street, that over 300 people opposed in that neighborhood, and they came out here and they spoke adequately. Then you turned right around and voted against a small project when the neighborhood supported that project because it was in your district. This is the problem we're going to have with district elections. Did you vote against it because that restaurant did not contribute? Did you vote against that because that restaurant did not contribute to your campaign? I mean, these are the questions that the audiences are starting to ask out there. So you can't be pro-development on one side of town and just the opposite on the other town. That was a business that was in business for 30 years. And she's playing by the rules. If ABC thinks she's serving alcohol illegally, they would certainly know that there would have been complaints filed with the ABC. So I mean, you have to be careful how you present projects and how you vote. And so that's why Mayor Protem, I want to thank you. I disagree with you on a lot of issues sometimes, but you stand your ground, you stand for what you're right and what you believe in, and you have a lot of respect out here in this community. And so the guys that are up here that are going to be leaving, and I don't want to leave you out who say you're the Mr. Politician, you're always looking for your next job, so I'm sure you're going to be landing somewheres. So, but we can't sit on the fence. We have to continue these projects. And it's the same thing with this homeless issue. You know, Mr. Mayor, you promised Judge Carter that we would have 600 beds in the city of San Ana. We've got to put them someplace. You know, this is a temporary shelter out there. You can't clean up the homeless off the street and not have a place to put them. We have to do something. We have to solve this problem some way. So without it costing money through lawsuits and all of this, we've got to come to a solution. And the last thing I want to say is maybe we can do something for the city manager's office. You know, there was a big fire in Irvine over the weekend.
Peter, it's red, so please conclude.
But working wardrobes lost their entire office building with all the clothes that they provide for homeless people looking for jobs and work and everything. And they're asking all the communities to donate clothes and shoes. If we could find a way to get that message out, I'd appreciate that.
Thank you for your comments. And by the way, on the shelter, we just want others to do their fair share because they're not.
I realize that, and somebody has to push that issue. And if Judge Carter's no longer there, it's going to go back to square one.
Thank you. So with that, any comments from our city manager?
Just very briefly, sir. I know that you had requested that I give you homeless updates, so I'm doing them once a month typically at the first meeting. Just for the month of January, and I know you know these stats, Mayor, because you quoted them in court today, but the cult team made 725 contacts just for the month of January, resulting in 36 individuals accepting shelter, 305 citations, and 155 arrests. So we still have our cult and our dart teams, they're continuing to monitor and patrol the streets daily. The crews are actively responding to requests from 9:00 AM to midnight, Monday through Thursdays, and from 7:00 AM to 10:00 on Friday through Sunday. They did clean up over 272 locations throughout the city. Of those 272, 125 were proactive and 137 of them were based on requests that came directly through my Santa Ana app. So we are continuing to focus on the Santiago Creek area. And we also recently did a cleanup of a rather large storm drain where there was a lot of illegal activity taking place. That's all.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Becerra, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank our city staff for lighting up the water tower in purple and gold to commemorate the contributions and life of Kobe Bryant, who we lost two Sundays ago to a tragic accident that took not only his life, but the lives of eight other individuals, including his daughter and Orange Coast College's baseball coach, John Altavelli, which my understanding is they're going to have services for him at Angel Stadium, I believe, coming up. As we remember those that are past, I do want to congratulate the organizers of the TET parades that my colleagues and I participated in two weekends ago for having successful events and ringing in hopefully a prosperous and happy Lunar New Year. I also want to thank Mintai and his planning staff for placing information about development applications on the city's website. So now you'll be able to go to the city's website to find development applications ahead of time rather than getting a planning commission or a city council agenda and going, oh, my goodness, I didn't know this was being proposed. So this will hopefully give folks a lot more time and ability to participate and provide input as these development projects go through the process. I also wanted to report that after our last meeting, I was up in Sacramento attending the League of California Cities Academy up in SAC. It was a great opportunity to interact with a lot of fellow council members throughout the state. Shouldn't be a surprise to anybody, given what we talked about all night tonight. Homelessness was definitely the hot topic. I also want to invite everybody to my office hours that I'll be hosting this Saturday over at the South Coast Global Medical Center on South Bristol, this Saturday at 10:00 AM. And going forward, it'll be on the first Saturday of each month. Just a nice informal setting, a good opportunity to discuss issues, whatever's of importance to you, and hopefully we can figure out some solutions to those problems. And since we won't meet again until February 18th, I want to take the opportunity to wish my wife a Happy Valentine's Day. Thank you.
Councilmember Vince Armento, please.
Wow. Making the rest of us look better, putting pressure on us now to do the same. So I'll start off saying Happy Valentine's Day to my wife, my mom, and everybody out there. And hopefully they'll enjoy themselves, cover it all. So I'm going to be brief. I really do want to thank staff for lighting that tower up as well. I think I had a conversation with the city manager, and so I think it affected us all. You know, we had nine lives that were lost, unfortunately. And you know, and all, if not most of them, were Orange County residents and the connections between their lives and, you know, and San Ana's. My daughter had a friend who was a mutual friend with Kobe's daughter who passed away. So I remember Kobe coming here and using our parking lot at one time because he had to be in court for something, traffic matter or something, and they didn't want to park him in the lot over by the courthouse because he would have drawn too much attention. I think at that time, Councilmember Alvarez was down there and helped him and got a picture with him. And I always, you know, I was always envious because she wasn't a Laker fan, and I'm a lifelong Laker fan. I didn't get that picture. But in any event, thank you for doing that. I think that showed that, you know, we have so many fans of just folks who admired that life and were just affected by the tragedy, you know, and it really, I think, affected many of us deeply. But what I did want to say, just changing topics as my final comment, was I heard that the sheriff was, made a statement that the sanctuary state law is making it very difficult for him to enforce and carry out his responsibilities here in Orange County. And so I know that we've had a sanctuary city ordinance for quite a while. And looking at the stats that the chief provided, it looks like we're trending in a very positive direction. I wouldn't say despite that, but because we have that policy, because he has been able to instill trust from our members of the public and our residents and people who may have felt jeopardized at one time by being apprehended simply because they had a status offense of not being a legal resident. Now we're witnesses, now we're victims, now feel comfortable coming to our officers and calling out crimes when they wouldn't have in the past. So maybe what we could do is, I know the chief isn't here, but I see some of the staff here. Maybe we can reach out and help the sheriff, understand how to better police and how to use that as an asset rather than a detriment, because I think that our officers do it well. And I know when I've had conversations with the chief, he sees that only as an enhancement in his ability to police. And he's been very grateful because now we don't have folks in the shadows who are unwilling to come forward to call out a crime and are unwilling to come and testify as witnesses. So I think we do it well, and I think we could serve as a good example here and maybe give some guidance. So with that, I'll bid everybody a good night. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to thank all the staff that came out for the TET parade also. It was a great time. I know it was a lot of work and organization that take place and patience because we were there waiting for quite a while. And we had a lot of fun. It was great. I also want to thank the staff, the police department, and the city staff for all the work they did, for helping us with the Family Justice Center here at the police department, first of its kind, located, co-located at a police department. So out of the 90 family justice centers in the nation, this is the one, that's the first. San Ana's always been a leader since the 1970s in community policing, and this is just another step forward, helping out our community. Also, I'm happy to report we've had four walk-ins, the very next day, four walk-ins, and we have another appointment. We have 15 calls. I still don't have the stats. You know, it's not bad for just starting out, and it's made a difference. I've had a number of calls from different organizations within the county asking me for a flyer. Flyer's not done yet. They're willing, they send me an email so they can print it out themselves and give it to their clients because they see and deal with a lot of these folks from our city that could use these services. Also, I would like to invite all the girls here from San Ana for the Orange County Fire Academy, the empowerment camp, Orange County firefighters, the fire authority, excuse me. And this is a great weekend for them, where they learn about leadership and what it's like to work in the fire service. And that'll take place Saturday, March 7th, and Sunday, March 8th, 2020. It's free. I remember last year, we had, I think we had the highest number of young ladies that attended this camp, and I think it was around seven or eight. We had the highest number out of all of them. There was like 50 young ladies that attended this. It was really, really great. I'm going to see if I can have the city manager's office put this out in the city email. Thank you, everyone. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Cecil Lorio, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, Happy Lunar New Year to everybody that celebrates it, especially the Vietnamese community and the Chinese-American community. Also, Happy Valentine's to everybody, including my lovely wife. And did want to report on a couple of things. I was able to attend the ceremony at the school district where they renamed the headquarters after, you know, our first mayor, Spurgeon, because, you know, many might know there was a Spurgeon School, but the school district joined a couple of schools together, Romero-Cruz and Spurgeon. The school is now Romero-Cruz. But really, pretty much at the same time, the school district made a commitment to rename its headquarters after our first mayor. So I did attend that and somebody from the city manager's office as well. So want to report on that. I think that was a good action on their part. And then second, another festive thing, beautiful baby anteater at the zoo. And, you know, little baby's healthy and, you know, these baby anteaters, they typically just latch on to the back of the mothers for, you know, most of their living day in the early months. So that's exciting. If anybody has the chance to go visit the zoo and see that baby anteater, that would be a fantastic thing to do. I do want to thank, you know, my colleagues and staff for these complex issues. And, you know, many of these issues weren't created overnight, so they're not going to be solved overnight. But, you know, if every day we can make it a little bit better, I feel good about that. And, you know, our city manager Ridge is now several months in. I think you're more settled in and now have, you know, history on most projects. And I really do appreciate working with you, and I know you're doing a very good job working with your direct reports and the rest of the staff. So thank you.
Before Councilmember Penalosa, Mayor Protem forgot one.
One last thing. I wanted to thank Councilmember Penalosa and the mayor for attending the event the other day. I really, really appreciated the support from the council too to fund that project. And thank you again for being there, for taking the time to come out. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Penalosa, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I'd like to hear myself talk, I just would double down on everything that's been said tonight. But again, water staff in particular, thank you so much for lighting up that tower and what it meant to the entire, you know, region of Southern California, not just San Ana. You know, it's incredible. I was seeing it everywhere, on ESPN, at the Staples Center, and so it was really nice to see that. I know how difficult it is to climb that tower and how long it takes to physically, you know, put that colored film over each light. So, which reminds me of, it's good that we move forward, look into ways where we could, you know, program that and make it efficient and computerized would be great. I'm highly supportive of it. Just wanted to thank you guys for doing that. Thank you to staff for the TET parade. It was great being out there to celebrate. From my understanding is that on Sunday, at the Garden Grove TET parade, there were supposed to be skydivers that were going to come down at like 9:45 or 10:00 AM to start the festivities. And we all waited, we all waited, and no skydivers were coming. And then I heard that apparently John Wayne Airport, where they were going to leave from, had grounded small airplanes and helicopters because of this missing helicopter that, or that apparently had already crashed or... So it was kind of, you know, crazy to think, you know, that that was happening. So with that said, Happy Valentine's Day to my girlfriend, my mom, and my dog, Jax, and to all of you out there. So thank you so much. That's it.
Can I ask questions about your dog?
Sure.
No, no. Let me leave it alone. I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. First of all, Happy Valentine's Day to my wife, Laura, and everybody that celebrates it, including Councilmember Penalosa.
Jax.
And Jax.
He ate a Barbie.
Pardon?
He ate a Barbie over the weekend.
Jax ate a Barbie over the weekend?
I found that after, after nature had taken its course. I was like, what? Was it your Barbie? No, it was my niece's.
His niece's Barbie?
TMI, TMI.
After nature digging its course?
What were you doing?
Well, picking up.
All right. Enough information on that. Wonderful TET parades, plural. I know many of us went to the Westminster one and the Garden Grove one, and it was, I think, a very good event. Just want to mention that I got to get out there because when I was out at the zoo a while ago, the anteater was pregnant. And I know, Councilmember Solario, you are an anteater, right? You went to UCI. And there is a UCI connection, by the way. The Chancellor at the Dime came down and UCI helped us with it. So I think it's beautiful that we have an anteater at the zoo. I also want to mention that the Family Justice Center, it's just too bad we didn't have a video because we should have videoed or get a copy of that entire ceremony. And maybe we'd still reach out to the media, reach out to somebody and put it on Channel 3 because it was a wonderful, not only event, but of the tour of the center itself and how it's already beginning to help people. I think it's going to be one of those projects that has a long-term legacy. And those that are able to avail themselves of the services there really have no choice. They many times have no other choice. I understand there's about 4,000 cases a year in the city of, you know, abuse. And the nearest center is over in Anaheim. And so we're going to get over time, I think, hundreds if not thousands of people utilizing our center here in San Ana. It's really very much, very much needed. I also want to thank Councilmember Penalosa because unfortunately, right after the tragic event with, you know, Kobe Bryant and the other eight that were flying with him, including his daughter, he called me up right away, sent me a text about the water tower. So I don't know if it was your idea or the community's idea, somebody's idea, but I know very quickly we jumped on that and made it happen. And I want to thank you because you're on your toes on that. Finally, I want to close this meeting in honor of Kobe Bryant. I think he's very much an Orange County, not only resident, but, you know, family member. And the community that he was a part of, I know my good friend in Costa Mesa, Jim Righeimer, the former mayor there, his daughter plays on Kobe's team. And so they often would travel together, including in that helicopter. And that day, he, something happened, Jim decided to drive. He was not obviously in the helicopter and, you know, when I called him up, they were there waiting, 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 and then they got the bad news. So it touched, I think, all of Orange County and beyond. And I think it is appropriate to adjourn this meeting in his honor plus the other eight that were traveling with him. With that, this meeting is adjourned.